Check, check.
This October 6, 2022, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. I will make the following announcement. The Fairfax County School Board understands that our LGBTQIA+ students, staff, and families are worried about the impact of Governor Yonkin's proposed model policies for transgender and gender expansive students. Nearly one in five transgender and non-binary youth attempted suicide in the last year. LGBTQIA+ youth who found their school to be affirming reported lower rates of attempting suicide. It is necessary to ensure our school community is a place where all students can live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, harassment, or violence. Our policies and regulations will continue supporting our transgender and gender expansive students and their families. Fairfax County School Board Policy 1450 protects students, educators, and other staff from discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Fairfax County Public Schools Regulation 2603 relies on robust parent guardian engagement to help provide transgender and gender expansive students with protections and supports. We will continue partnering with parents and guardians because their involvement is necessary to student success. Furthermore, our school board is committed to following the Virginia Human Rights Act, Title IX's prohibition on gender identity discrimination, and the subtle law of Grimm versus Gloucester County School Board, 972-F-3, 586, Fourth Circuit, 2020, which requires respect for students' gender identity. Protecting, supporting, and affirming our transgender and gender expansive students is critical to achieving a safe and respectful learning environment for all students and providing them with equal access to educational programs and services and activities. The work to do so in a holistically inclusive way continues, but we know that from this commitment, we will not waver. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and performing the National Anthem by the Cooper Middle School Symphonic Band under the direction of Matthew Baker.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on October 6, 2022, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Ms. McLaughlin, do I have a second? Ms. Tolan, all those in favor? That is Ms. Kees-Gamarra, Ms. Maron, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Bukarski, and myself. That motion passes. And do we have a, I think that's it. I don't see anyone on the screen. So, Section 2.03, Announcements. Ms. Darnatt Kofex is absent this evening. Item 5.07, 2022-23 Title I Parent Advisory Committee Charge has been moved from new business to the consent agenda at the request of a Board member. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcps.edu/schoolboard/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcps.edu/tv/Channel99. I call on Ms. Toddby for an announcement.
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes, Ms., yes, Dr. Anderson?
I'd like to make a motion to add the truthful education and FCPS support for educators and school-based administrators resolution as item 2.09 to today's agenda.
Dr. Anderson, are you making a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
That motion will require two-thirds vote of the Board to pass?
That is not correct. I think we should just wait for it to be seconded, and I can speak to it.
Well, I can ask our parliamentarian for that correction. Do you have a second?
Can we have the motion be seconded?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Parliament, will you let us know how many, what's the vote needed for, to amend the agenda?
Madam Chair, I believe it's either two-thirds or a majority of the entire Board as a motion to amend something previously adopted.
All right, does anyone wish to speak to this motion?
Yes, I would like to speak to this motion briefly. I have four points that I'd like to share, and I'd like to expand on those very quickly. This resolution is aligned to FCPS work and serves as an umbrella statement to support the work being asked of staff on current policies and upcoming education equity policy and controversial issues policies. The process by which I bring this forward is permissible as outlined in the Board's Governance Manual on page 58. The resolution has broad support of the community, advocacy groups, and the superintendent. Board consultation and communication has been provided beginning September 1, exactly five weeks ago. This resolution is directly aligned, like I shared, with the equity and policy work presented by the Board on July 12. This resolution is a signal to our teachers, administrators, and staff who are engaging in the work of the Board and to show that we are recognizing the challenges that they face and that they have our support in this difficult work. Tonight, we will read in the Principal's recognition that educational leaders face many challenges to supporting and educating our students. The Teaching Truthful Education and FCPS Resolution speaks to-
Dr. Anderson, the motion is just to amend the agenda. It is not a motion to speak to the merits of the actual resolution itself.
Okay, then let me speak to that. To amend the agenda, according to our Governance Manual, page 58, the school board members who are wanting to have an item included and detailed shall contact the Board Chair or the clerk with a request. I made this request on September 1, and again, for the third time, on October 2. The Division Superintendent or individual school board members can also bring any new business not listed as part of the agenda. This is what I am doing right now, and it requires a majority vote according to page 58 of our Governance Manual. The Chair has a prerogative to limit or postpone discussion of the new business until the next scheduled meeting unless overruled by a majority of the Board, which is my ask at this point, that we allow for this resolution to be heard this evening and to be voted upon this evening. I would like to point out that this is a resolution and not a typical action item. We have five resolutions that have been brought this evening that did not have any previous posting or indication of advanced majority support, which is not a prerequisite to bring forth an agenda item. There is no provision in the Governance Manual nor in Robert's Rules that state only measures with majority support can be brought forward for consideration by the body. So I will stop there to share that I do have permissible governing policy to bring this forward.
Dr. Anderson, are you asking to amend the agenda or bring this as new business?
I am asking to add this item as Agenda 2.09.
So you're asking to amend the agenda. I'm just making this clear because you mentioned both new business and amending. I just want to make sure we're clear which one you're asking for.
I am requesting that the agenda be amended so that the truthful and education resolution be added as item 2.09.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Is there any other, would you like to speak to your second, Ms. Omeish?
My understanding is that the community has been asking for this for some time, to have a strong Board statement in support of what we've already been speaking to, and I appreciate Dr. Anderson having shepherded this for some time now after hearing testimony from the public, at least for two meetings, special, from SEPTA, the Fairfax Education Association, the Fairfax County Council, PTA, is the NAACP, and others. So I do understand that perhaps justice delayed is justice denied, so I do support hearing this today.
Thank you. Does anyone else speak to the motion of amending the agenda only, not the merits of the resolution? Ms. Maron?
Yes, thank you. I support this amendment. I'm aware that it was first brought by Dr. Anderson on September 5 to the Board, and I've been in support of it since that moment. Again, it also reflects the input of constituents. I would have been happy to second it. Thank you for doing so to my colleague. And the Governance Manual is something that the Governance Committee is going to be working on to have clearer processes for resolutions and recognitions, including clarifying who contributes language. But at this time, I think there's been ample notice, and I do support this addition to the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I do appreciate the work that Dr. Anderson has done on this and certainly appreciate the time that she and I initially spoke about this. But there are 12 members on our Board, and what I understood to be both from Dr. Anderson, who emailed our Board at 10:30 in the morning on Monday, saying, "Here is revised language." That is exactly what the email said. Then our Chair and Vice Chair considered it in chairs on how we would incorporate this to our agenda and that we were notified it would be placed for a vote on October 20. I have shared with Dr. Anderson that I appreciate all the edits because this isn't simply about our belief in the merits of the resolution, but because this is a statement that will be coming from the Board, we need to make sure that all of the details, the statements that are in there, we speak with accuracy and impeccability. And I did share with Dr. Anderson, and I am concerned about one statement in the resolution that I think is not an accurate reflection of the community in which we live. It is not an accurate reflection of how a degree of fear may exist within our employees. And I worry that when the Board makes a statement like that, that's going to affect the morale of our employees and affect the perception about our county. So I think that there's a way to refine this resolution and have a unanimous support from the Board, and that's important. And so procedurally, for the audience to understand, Dr. Anderson did not tell, at least me or other Board members, that she planned on pushing for this tonight. And had she explained that on Monday, I would have made sure that even though we were very busy this week, that she and I could have had this conversation. The statement that was read earlier this evening in support of our trans and LGBTQ community was a work of collaboration by the Board, and I know we can get there with this resolution as well. I'm simply asking our colleagues to make sure that this is a resolution that we all feel speaks with impeccability and accuracy, and I would like for us to continue having this done in that manner, and we vote on it on the 20th.
Ms. Kees-Gamarra?
Yes, thank you. I'm supporting this opportunity because I've heard from a number of our community members, our staff members, that really want to make sure that we are clear in this very difficult time period where some of our leaders are making statements that make it difficult to do their job every day. It's my understanding, and I had an opportunity to review this, I think, about three weeks ago, and we've had comments coming from that time period. So I guess I disagree a little bit about the opportunity to give comment, although I understand it is difficult to bring 12 people. We've had, we have lots and lots of discussion. I think that part of the reason this is coming forward today is because when we are working with our advocates, when we are working with our community, it's important that we look like we're responsive. And I know that there is no intent not to look that way, but it is important that when these issues are raised and when we hear these various cries for help, that we do our very best to try to make sure that the community understands that we hear them. And for that reason, I will support this discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Thanks, I appreciate it. I think there's just some confusion on the part of several of us. My understanding was that this is slated for the October 20th Board meeting. Is that not accurate?
That is accurate.
I guess, I think Dr. Anderson and several folks in our community have done a beautiful job of securing support for this and rewriting after countless feedback has been given. I very much appreciated, Dr. Anderson, you incorporating some of the changes that I had initial concerns about, and I committed to you that I would support this resolution. So I certainly am not in any way trying to take that back. I guess my fear, my frustration is that we have this beautiful room full of folks here tonight, and I'd like us to be able to move on to public comments. And so if we're going to do this on the 20th, I hate the idea that we're going to spend another 25 minutes arguing about whether it's done this week or the 20th, because I imagine that our community is ready for it to happen, but the difference between two weeks or not is not make or break. So I'm honestly not sure how I'll be voting, but I do want to make it clear, I support the resolution in totality, but I'm ready to get to hear from our students and our community.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Can I say ditto? I want to first be very clear. Dr. Anderson has been advocating for this and has, you know, I had not spoken to her in several weeks, and last night at 10:45 at night, we had a conversation about this motion, this resolution. And at that point, it had not been, and I said to her, I have not seen it on Board Docs, I have not seen it on our agenda anywhere to be had. Having said that, then today, we did receive notice that it is scheduled for the 20th of this month. And on the 20th of this month, I will be very pleased to support this resolution, and I will also offer some great appreciation, even more appreciation for the work that Dr. Anderson has done and the advocates in the community, because the other aspect of it is that I understand from a couple of my colleagues that there is just a little bit of a nuance that they would like to see resolved. And if we can get that resolved, then the voice of the Board is that much more powerful because we have a, ideally, the, all 12 of us voting in support of the resolution, but significantly more people supporting it at that time. So I appreciate your advocacy, Dr. Anderson, but I will not support amending tonight's agenda.
Ms. Maron?
Yes, I believe that the best way for me to appreciate Dr. Anderson's work and to respect the advocacy of the community is to support the change in the agenda and then to support the resolution.
Robert's Rules and the Governance Manual of this Board allow for the agenda to be changed.
Board members can make changes at the table, so I move to call the question.
There is a motion to call the question that takes a two-thirds vote, so I'll call for the vote to call the question. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, do we have a second? Yeah, who's, Ms. Kees-Gamarra's second? All those in favor? That is, that motion, that is, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Maron, Ms. Kees-Gamarra, Ms. Omeish, which way are you voting? So that motion fails.
Madam Chair, you need to call for the no votes as well.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You need to call for the votes against as well.
All right, so let me, I will call for all those in favor, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Maron, Ms. Kees-Gamarra, all those opposed? Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, and myself, that's four. We do not have the two-thirds, I believe, for that to pass, so we will continue with the conversation. Next, we had Ms., well, we're not going to do go-backs on this, we'll go, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Maron called the question, that was her statement. Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. I just wanted the opportunity to also thank Dr. Anderson for working so hard on this and the people that have assisted her with putting this together. I have had a number of conversations with Dr. Anderson the last couple of days, and I appreciate that. I did express to her that I did want a little bit more time to gather a little bit more information, not because I don't fully support the spirit of this resolution, I absolutely do 100%. Only concerns that I have are I just wanted to make sure that we have it right, because I don't want there to be any way that we are even further slowing any of the work that we're doing around supporting, I mean, the point of this is to support our teachers and our administrators in what they're trying to do in our central office in any changes that they're making to our curriculum materials, and I want to make sure that that work is happening. So I was fully prepared to work on this and be able to vote on the 20th. So I would prefer that we have this on our agenda on the 20th.
Thank you. For that, I will call for the vote.
I'd like to make one more statement, please.
My light is also on.
I think we're going to call for the vote at this point. We've had statements to make.
I'd like to make one more statement because there weren't many things said that I would like to offer some additional information around. Oh, I'm so sorry, it's a bra.
All right, I will let Ms. Omeish make. She did speak.
She spoke twice, so I assumed. All right, at least one person spoke twice, so.
Ms. Omeish.
I just wanted to offer, I mean, this is, this is really unfortunate that we landed here, but I've certainly been on the other end of essentially trying to bring something and people piling on for procedural reasons as to why it shouldn't happen. And I just, in fairness, I mean, I know Dr. Anderson has been talking to me about this for a long time now. I know colleagues have, as they've shared, been, you know, genuinely trying to work through something that we can all get behind, but I just, in feeling that I have to speak the truth of what I've seen, I think Dr. Anderson has tried to follow procedure in several ways, and it's simply been pushed, and she's been promised several times that it's going to be on the agenda of X meeting. And so it's how many, you know, at some point, I'm not going to wait until I'm promised, it's October 20th, or it's whatever, God knows what day, and I think that's where this is coming from, because it tends to be that, and this is the same thing we see when, you know, you have protesters that behave in a certain way, right? And then the question is, why are you protesting in this way? This is not the way to civilly, you know, show your disgruntlement, right? We have a procedure, we have a way to do these things. But at some point, people reach the point of doing something differently because they've tried all those things. So I just, I have to say that in fairness to Dr. Anderson, because I've totally been on the other end of this, and saying that, guys, it's good work, I think we all agree with what it says. There's no reason to perhaps inaccurately signal to our community that we don't stand behind this. So that's the best I can offer.
Dr. Anderson, then Ms. McLaughlin, then we'll call the question.
Thank you. I just want to clarify some things about the timetable. The first time that I brought this up, I sent it to the Board Chair and Vice Chair and to the clerks on September 1. Then it was sent to the entire Board on September 5. And then I began from that day until the end of September to have conversations with just about every single one of you, most of you on the phone, some of you via email. But that happened, and this is the third version. The third version was sent on October 2 that stated, the title of the email said, "Resolution for 10-6," because in a previous conversation with our Chair, she said, "We would put it on 10-6 if you make these changes." Changes were made, so 10-6 was what I was looking ahead for. And then that was sent on Monday with that title for 10-6. No one could have missed that. Subsequently, I have another communication that says it would be tentatively for 10-20. That was the last communication I had yesterday, hence why I'm here today, because we've moved from my initial hope, which is to have this ready on 9:15, and I get it, there was work to do, so 10-6 was the date. 10-6, the goalpost was then moved. That is why I'm here, because I think a lot of communication went on with the Board, some of you way more extensive than others, but significantly enough so that we can stand behind this. And I also want to say that our teachers have signed on to this. They are saying this is important. They are saying this reflects their experience. SEPTA, the NAACP, MSAOC, these are the people who work in this division. They are saying this reflects my experience. How could we not honor that and be, and validate that? Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin? Ms. McLaughlin?
Um, again, I, I'm, I'm disappointed we find ourselves here because again, this should be a positive and very powerful resolution from the board. It's, it's unusual, um, because it was a resolution drafted by our advocates, brought to the board for consideration, that we then come out with a strong statement. And as I shared with Dr. Anderson, she and I served on the Governance Committee where we've spent the last year working on our, our controversial issues policy because we want every single one of our educators to feel safe in the way that they deliver exceptional curriculum to our students. Um, so this resolution is really important, and we should be getting unanimous support from the board for it. And as a former advocate, who's someone created the Fairfax Education Coalition in partnership with FEA, with FCFT, and many parent advocacy groups, I've been on the other side of that. And I also know that when the executive boards come forward and support something, that is important for us to hear. Uh, but that's not what this debate is tonight. The debate is that I'm looking at Dr. Anderson's email from this Monday morning where she said, "I hope that we can bring it to this Thursday's um, school board meeting." We were told by our chair that this would be on the 20th. I think it is really important for everybody to understand that when a board member says, "This is my hope", but then we get told something different, I never received an email from Dr. Anderson saying, "I plan to make this motion that I'm going to push this through, whether I know I've got 12 people supporting it or not." That is not how we do our best work. And that's all I'm asking of my colleagues. Dr. Anderson knows that I respect how hard she's worked on this. I respect our community that's been in support of it. But there are some things, as Ms. Tolan said, that we want to make sure when this board is speaking to something, that we're going to be speaking and, and making sure that it's accurate. Um, and, and I told you, making statements about our community in fear, we need to make sure it's stated accurately. And finally, again, we have an existing school board policy on controversial issues to protect our teachers. That exists now, we're trying to improve it and make it even stronger, and that is on the docket to come to the full board. So the fact that, that our educators don't even realize that we have these protections in place right now concerns me. Because I don't want a single teacher in this school district to be teaching in fear, being afraid for their personal lives, and currently the language in that resolution alludes to that. So I do hope again that Ms. Omeish, in all frankness, painting any one of us on this board as trying to obstruct this out of technicalities is not respectful. If we want to make sure that this is the most powerful resolution with unanimous support, which can get done by the 20th, when Dr. Anderson never told us that she wanted to procedurally do this, that is not good board work.
Thank you, I will call for the vote. We need a two-thirds vote to, or a majority of the entire school board, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor of amending the agenda? That is Ms. Kees-Gamaro, Ms. Maron, Ms. Omeish, and Dr. Anderson and Mr. Frisch. All those opposed? That is Ms. Yeah, we do not have a majority of the school board voting for, so that motion fails.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be recognized.
Yes, Dr. Anderson?
I'd like to make a motion to add the FCPS Commitment to Truthful Education, I'm sorry, Truthful Education and FCPS Support for Educators and School-Based Administrators Resolution to be added to the new business today.
Dr. Anderson, you don't need to make a motion for that, it.
I, I, I'd like to offer it, I know it doesn't require a vote, but I want to articulate it. I'd like it to be added to new business today.
So when we get to the new business section of the agenda, I will, if you'd speak up and I can recognize you for that.
I'm absolutely ready for the clerk to go ahead and add it to new business today, and I will send you the exact language so that we can read.
When we get to the new business part of the agenda, absolutely. That would be fine, it's already scheduled for the 20th, so that works with our alignment with what it's scheduled for. Alright, so section 2.03 announcements, sorry, I call on Ms. Togby for an announcement.
National School Lunch Week is October 10th through 14th. The National School Lunch Program, otherwise known as NSLP, serves nearly 30 million children every school day. President John F. Kennedy created National School Lunch Week in 1962 to promote the importance of a healthy school lunch in a child's life and the impact it has inside and outside of the classroom. The NSLP ensures that the health and wellbeing of all public school students boosts academic perform, performance by giving students the fuel they need to succeed and closes the opportunity gap for children across the county. During NSLW from October 10th through 14th, 2022, FCPS spotlights the hard work and dedication of our Food and Nutrition Services employees. Bullying Prevention Month recognition. In an effort to promote awareness of school bullying, the month of October has been designated as Bullying Prevention Month. Bullying is defined as any aggressive and unwanted behavior that is intended to harm, intimidate, or humiliate someone, involves a real or perceived power imbalance, and is repeated or has the potential to be repeated over time. Bullying includes actions such as threats, spreading rumors, attacking someone physically or verbally, and deliberately excluding someone from a group. Bullying can also take place through technology, also known as cyberbullying. Bullying can affect anyone and everyone. Those who are experiencing negative outcomes include depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school. School board members, superintendents, teachers, and parents play a critical role in creating a climate where bullying is not tolerated. When adults respond quickly and consistently to bullying behavior, they send the message that it is not acceptable. Research shows that stop, that this can stop bullying behavior over time. Parents, school staff, and other adults in the community can help prevent bullying by taking, by talking about it, building a safe school environment, and promoting kindness and inclusion when we stand together.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Togby. Agenda item 2.04, National School Principals' Month Resolution. The board will invite each recognition recipient to the dais for a photo after the reading of all recognitions. I call on Ms. Omeish for the resolution.
Thank you. Whereas, the celebration of National School Principals' Month honors elementary, middle, and high school principals and recognizes that school leadership is essential in preparing students for success, both during their pre-K 12 years and beyond. And whereas, principals serve a variety of critical roles, such as instructional leaders, community builders, assessment experts, budget analysts, facility managers, public relations experts, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates, as I'm sure they know well. And whereas, dedicated and inspiring principals work collaboratively with students, families, teachers, and the community. They set the academic tone of their school by setting ambitious goals, enforcing rigorous standards, and maintaining high curriculum standards and expectations for all students. And whereas, leadership is second only to classroom instruction among all school-related factors that contribute to what students learn at school. And whereas, educational leaders face many challenges in supporting and educating our students, and it is through their perseverance and passion that Fairfax County Public Schools continues to produce career-ready students. And now, therefore be it resolved, the Fairfax County School Board recognizes October 2022 as National School Principals' Month and the importance of school leadership in ensuring every child has access to high-quality education. I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Pekarsky, Ms. Omeish, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Yes, absolutely, uh, it's an honor to be able to recognize our principals who've shepherded our school system through many difficult years recently, and of course, an exciting year with many successes this time around. The, our school board introducing this resolution to honor principals, of course, for their visionary leadership and tireless pursuit of success for each student, uh, is nothing compared to the efforts that they put forward. Uh, but it, but I am hoping that in making this a month, uh, we are extending even beyond what former Governor Northam had declared in January of 2021 as the Virginia School Principals' Appreciation Week. Uh, we're here, we recognize their work across the Commonwealth uh, for a month. And with this resolution passage, of course, we're proud to celebrate every one of our principals. Um, we are also proud as a division that we have outstanding principal awards and outstanding new principal awards as part of our FCPS Employee Awards Ceremony as small gestures of appreciation for truly the monumental work that they do. Of course, we're up here, um, you know, doing our, our best uh, to, to set a tone for our system, but on the school level, they're really responsible for cultivating that community and inspiring young learners from the, the beginning of their journey all the way through to continue pursuing uh, their lifelong journey as, as learners. Um, you know, something uh, that's quite interesting is that principals weren't always a part of school buildings. Uh, at the beginning of the 20th century, as schools grew from one-room schoolhouses into schools with multiple grades and classrooms, the need arose for someone to manage these more complex roles. And it actually started initially by teachers, who continued to teach while dealing with school management needs, which I'm sure any principal could tell you is a crazy idea. Um, but as schools grew, principal teachers ended up becoming full-time administrators uh, who are able to handle, of course, the demands of the management responsibilities placed on their time. And so principals, of course, continued to wear several hats uh, and until today, serve as the North Star for our students. Uh, and so with that, I want to make sure that I recognize many principals who were able to join us today, which I know, again, this is really just a small token of appreciation from us for all the work that you've been doing. So as I say your name, if you would please stand. Uh, we have Josh Dismyter from Shrevewood Elementary, Chad Clayton from the Davis Center, Nikki Yakubovich from Pine Spring Elementary School, Margaret Barnes from Holmes Middle School, Victor Powell, Powell from Glasgow, Maddie Fallen from Sleepy Hollow, Candace Hunstad from Herndon Elementary, who's also the president of the Elementary School Association Principals, uh, Kim Retzer of, from South Lakes High School, Gordon Stokes from Carson Middle School, Maggie Grove from Wolf Trap Elementary School, Lisa Barrow from Cooper Middle School, Amy Montecchio from Hughes Middle School, Craig Herring from Walt Whitman Middle School, and Anne Smith from the Key Centers, uh, the Special Education Center. If there's anyone I missed, please stand, or if anyone joined us, um, we are so grateful. Please join me in giving them a warm, warm round of applause. We'll of course be calling you to take a photo with us shortly. Uh, but to them and the nearly 200 principals we have in our division, thank you so much. Words will never be enough to express our appreciation for you. Uh, but we hope that we continue um, to be inspired by one another in the fact that you all are leading a generation and are really inspiring a, a movement forward um, towards a more just society by educating these young minds.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Pekarsky, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, of course, thank you. Um, I'm also um, happy to be seconding this motion, and I did see Ms. Amy Goodlow as well from Rocky Run, my own kid's principal for a few years. Just wanted to make sure we had everybody. Um, thank you for coming out, we know it's a long day for all of you, but we appreciate you being here so that we can offer our thanks in person, in public, for all you do. Um, our principals are, um, you know, I think the best in the country. Their professionalism, their hard work, they set the tone for a school. Um, leadership at the top. Matters very, very much. Um, and you can tell a high-performing school um, by the leadership that it has. Our principals are instructional leaders, they're scheduler extraordinaires, they're cheerleaders of our students and our staff, they're innovators, they're nurturers, and they're just all-around miracle makers um, at different times. And I think we can appreciate that now, after what we've been through the last few years, more than ever. So on behalf of the board, I just want to thank all of you for your dedication to our students and staff and everything you do on a daily basis for FCPS. Um, we are very, very lucky um, to have you uh, as part of our FCPS family. Thank you.
Ms. Tolan?
In an effort to get all of our principals home to their families after a long day at school, I'll keep this really short. Um, I have always enjoyed working with principals, and I so respect the work that you do. I see you as the ultimate entrepreneurs and managers in our school system. I think all of my principals know, and I extend the same to any principal, I'm here to support you and your incredible work, do not hesitate to reach out at any time.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson?
I would be remiss if I didn't take the, the opportunity to say thank you to our principals. And I see numerous principals from my cluster, and actually my own child's principal, Mr. Powell. Thank you so much for being here. Um, as one board member who used to have your job, what I have been saying the last three years is thank goodness I don't have your job, because it has been just so very difficult and so very thankless, and you all have persevered. You've had to manage your own trauma while trying to guide and help others with theirs. And while you're moving the, the school instructionally, the work has just been immense, and you have done it with aplomb, and you've done it with grace. And I'm just so very grateful for all of you, those who are represented here and those who are not with us, for all of your work, because it is Herculean, and I'm just so very amazed by what you do each and every day, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I know we have a long night, but I, I want to just briefly say that uh, I'm not only grateful for every principal who's here this evening for your tireless work um, in really ensuring uh, high-quality education for all of our kids, uh, but I also want to thank all of my Braddock District School, um, Braddock District principals because um, they have certainly, over the years, have always treated me with um, a partnership that I deeply appreciate. And uh, it's already enough that principals have a regional superintendent, executive principals, and the superintendent, and the assistant superintendents. And the fact that you um, do uh, partner with us on so many ways. Um, and I, I really just want to say that is appreciated with gratitude. So thank you for all you've done, and especially um, throughout the pandemic and emerging from it.
Ms. Cohen?
Thank you, and I know we missed a couple of folks too. I saw Anthony Harris from Frost is tucked back there, if you'll wave. And Lironda Peterson from Riverside, you stood up somewhere too? Oh, okay, thank you, thank you guys so much. Um, I just wanted to say, I echo, of course, all of this, but um, my mom was a principal, my mom was my principal, which um, yeah, that was a rough one for both of us. Um, but I did just want to say, I, I hope that you can go home and share with your families how much we appreciate them, because we know what they give up to have you give 110% to your job and your school family. I know that all of those kids become your kids. I remember being very jealous of that as the child of the principal, but um, those are your kids, and, and we appreciate that you see our children as your children. I see Mr. Powell, your own child is here, thank you so much. So um, please do pass along to us, from us, um, how much we appreciate what your families give and what you give up to give us what you give. So thank you, thank you is not quite enough, but it's, it's what we've got right now.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all because there are no greater hearts, no bigger hearts than the hearts of our principals. They often are the ones to dust off our kids' knees uh, when they're fall. They uh, teach how kids can resolve uh, differences amongst each other. And they are absolutely focused on the academic success of each and every child in a building. And so you all are the heart of our school system, and I thank you for what you do every day.
Thank you, and with that, I'll just take a couple minutes, or actually less than that, really briefly, just to say thank you from all of us here. We, we all truly appreciate the hard work, and I know you must be exhausted because I know you probably all start at 5:00 AM, and this is late for you. So I won't say anything more other than say, we are so grateful for how you care for our students each and every day, and how you engage with our families each and every day, so thank you. With that, I will call for the vote, all those in favor? And that is unanimous? Wonderful, yay. Sorry, I just had to say that, I was very excited, I love our principals. Um, Agenda Item 2.05, Custodian Appreciation Week Recognition. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for the recognition.
Wonderful, uh, good evening, everyone. The Fairfax County School Board is proud to celebrate National Custodian Appreciation Week, which runs from October 2nd to the 9th. Custodians are the employees- Custodians are the employees who keep our schools and workplaces running smoothly and often operate behind the scenes. FCPS's dedicated custodians keep our schools and buildings clean and safe, both inside and out. They understand safety hazards and the proper use of various cleaning and sanitizing solutions. It has been said that custodians really run the school and have a huge impact on the school culture and the student achievement. They've also been instrumental in recent years in ensuring our students and our schools remain safe for them and staff during the COVID pandemic. Maintaining our facilities takes hard work, extensive knowledge, perseverance, and is not for the weak of heart. FCPS custodians are constantly visible, helpful, and in many ways, the first responders in emergencies at our schools. Students know them, love them, and enjoy celebrating them. So please make sure that you thank them for the incredible jobs that they do. And we will be having a recognition in just a few minutes. And I will say a few personal remarks before any of my colleagues would like to add theirs. I grew up in Northern California, and I was in elementary school almost 50, 40 to 50 decades ago, or years ago. I know, I really, really sound old. The point being, yes, I'm in my mid-50s. I should have just led with that. But I still remember Mr. Sabatini. He was my elementary school custodian, and Mr. Sabatini was beloved by every one of my classmates in our elementary school. And while I can't really do the math tonight about my own age, I do remember him fondly. And I do know that even for my own children and their custodian at Little Run Elementary, and how she was just so beloved by everyone. And so I really just wanted to put a personal touch to these remarks. It's not just simply a recognition that we're doing, but that I know each and every one of us can think back in our own childhood years and think how amazing our custodians and the role they play in bringing love, support, and kindness to our children's lives each and every day.
Thank you. Board members, I have two minutes to address this recognition, should they wish. I see Mr. Frisch has his light up.
Thank you. Last year, I had the good fortune of being able to shadow our custodial crew at Mantua Elementary School. I got to put on the blues and then get to work with them cleaning the school. It is incredibly difficult and time-intensive work. And, you know, whenever you visit a school, I highly suggest you check in with the custodial crew and thank them for the work that they do. I would just add that, you know, these kinds of recognitions are never enough when it comes to saying thank you. And so my hope is that, just as we have in the last two years, we will continue to show our thanks with our dollars as well.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Again, another opportunity for which I can't miss, to say thank you to our custodians. And I'm sure that the principals who are in the room will also agree, that is your best friend in the building. They have the same house as you. You hang with them. Summer, snow day, closures, that is your buddy, and that's the experience that I've had with every custodial, custodian and custodial staff that I've worked with. So I am eternally grateful for the work that I know I have received from them and the work that I see that they're doing for our schools each and every single day. Our kids are messy. They are so messy. To get through a day and not have the building look like a bomb went off, it takes a lot of work, and our custodians do this with so much ease, we don't even see it. You know your building is awesome when you don't even think about it. It doesn't come easy. So please, thank you so much to all of our custodians and their work, and I do want to echo what Mr. Frisch just shared. We need to offer more than platitudes. We need to offer compensation that is a living wage, and that really supports what we're saying here. That shows the value. You know, we have to put our money where our mouths are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keyskamara?
Yes, I, too, want to say thank you. I feel oftentimes, our custodians are the front lines for our schools. They create an atmosphere that is welcoming. Clean buildings, well-kept buildings, actually contributes to how children perceive being able to access education. And so your work is invaluable. I still remember my elementary school custodian, his name was John. He miraculously knew where people were. And so when my brother came to look for me, he went to Mr. John, and Mr. John said, Karen's over there. So I am just so grateful for the presence of our custodians, and just thank you. I thank you on behalf of all of our families, because we really couldn't do much of anything without your constant diligence and your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
I just, a little bit of an anecdote, the custodians are absolutely amazing and a key part of any team that you have in your school on anything that you're trying to get done. When I was working with our environmental education program here with FCPS, and I would work with teachers, and they would ask me, oh, if I'm setting up an ECO team at my school, who's the, you know, who needs to be on the team? I always, they were sometimes surprised when I said, the first person you need to recruit is your custodian. Because if you're building a garden, you're changing the recycling in your cafeteria, you're doing an energy conservation program, the custodian needs to know about it, and they'll help you. Once in a while, people would say things to me, like, well, our custodian doesn't speak English. And I said, well, I have yet to find a custodian, if I showed them a monarch chrysalis out in the garden, that they didn't get it, and why we were building these amazing gardens for our students to work in. One of the things I did is went to the custodian training program, and the warmth and the welcoming reception that I had from the custodians when they were really pulled in as part of the team was incredible. So they're part of the team with a capital T. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this part of the meeting, Dr. Reed is not supposed to speak. She gets to speak a little bit later. But I had the privilege and the joy of being able to visit a number of our schools with her, and was so proud of our buildings. But it was so wonderful to see Dr. Reed admire with fresh eyes about how great our facilities are maintained by our custodial staff. And the reason they're maintained by our custodial staff in that manner is because our custodians take, they take pride and they take ownership of those buildings. And it is absolutely amazing when you go to buildings that have not been renovated in 35 years, but the floors are impeccable, the grounds are well-kept, and it's because of that pride and their recognition that our kids feel better about their education if they are able to attend a school that is shiny and well-maintained and orderly. And that is because of the wonderful custodial staff that we have. And so I'm going to echo the joy that Dr. Reed shared as she toured the buildings with me. So thank you to each and every one of you, and a special shout-out to Mr. Poon at West Potomac, whom I count on as a very dear friend, having spent a lot of time in that building.
Ms. Amash?
Thank you. I know my colleagues spoke to the contribution of our custodians to the health and safety of our, of our buildings, and of course, their cleanliness. I want to also add that it's always a point of reflection for me, that we're honoring our principals and our custodians at the same time. And really, as a division, how we treat our custodians, how we treat our operational staff, tends to speak to our leadership ethics as a division, and being able to see ourselves truly as a flat organization and seeing and recognizing the value in every one of our, of our employees. You know, our custodians tend to be contributors to raising our children and instilling values in them in the hallways. They're also the cool adult that kids can be friends with when they're not able to find someone in the building, and that's something to really celebrate and recognize. I certainly know that the custodian played that role in my school, in my school. And I hope that we can always celebrate them and recognize them as such, because too often, we, I think it's fair to say, right, we forget their, their role, and perhaps even, they might, they might feel invisible. And so I don't know if our custodians for tonight are in the room. Do we have them there? Yeah? Can we give them a round of applause, please, for all their hard work? In a time when the safety of our school buildings and of our communities are not always guaranteed, I thank you. I thank you for all that you've been doing and for being there as role models for our kids in the building.
Thank you, Ms. Amash. And before I call for the vote, I'd just like to say a couple things. I wanted to name the custodians that I know are here, and I apologize if I don't have your name, but we know we celebrate and respect and are so grateful for you also. But from Claremont Elementary School, we have Jessica Lopez and Agnes Bempa. From Liberty Middle School, we have three custodians, and I apologize, I don't have your names. From Longfellow Middle School, one of our wonderful custodians is here. From Marshall High School, we have Osai Rebecca Prince Fosu and John Keller. And from Woodley Hills Elementary School, we have Brandon Davis and Amma Maioli. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for keeping our school so amazingly neat. I don't know how you do it. I had two kids in my house, and it was much messier than I see the school with sometimes thousands of kids. So I'm very impressed, and thank you for being that adult for our children who often need it, and we so respect, admire your work. So thank you for being here.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, just, I know one custodian out there, her name is Ms. Osay from Marshall High School, so I want to thank her.
Thank you. Agenda item 2.06, moving on with our five resolutions today. LGBTQIA+ History Month Resolution. I call on Mr. Frisch for the resolution.
Thank you. Whereas LGBTQIA+ History Month is recognized in October across the United States and in Fairfax County Public Schools to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions and experiences of too often overlooked or silenced LGBTQIA+ people, communities, and movements throughout our history. Whereas, the special month was founded in 1994 by Missouri high school history teacher, Rodney Wilson, who chose October for the inaugural celebration to coincide with National Coming Out Day on October 14th, and to commemorate the First March on Washington for LGBTQIA Rights in October of 1979. And whereas, the National PTA states, quote, "That schools should be a safe, supportive, and respectful environment for all students," and that, quote, "LGBTQIA+ students are more likely than their peers to be bullied, feel unsafe in school, and skip school due to safety concerns." And whereas, students are involved in GSA clubs at many middle and high schools throughout Fairfax County Public Schools, where they can network and socialize with each other and educate their communities through forums, announcements, and other activities. And these clubs are an asset to our schools, with research indicating that schools with GSAs have better mental health outcomes for all students. And whereas, the Fairfax County School Board celebrates its richly diverse community of LGBTQIA students, families, and staff, recognizes the urgency of its charge to foster a school community where all feel valued, supported, and hopeful, and advances policies that protect LGBTQIA students and staff so they can live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, and violence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, on behalf of the students, educators, and families of Fairfax County Public Schools, does hereby proclaim October 2022 as LGBTQIA+ History Month in Fairfax County Public Schools. And in the spirit of One Fairfax, that the Fairfax County School Board urges all to learn more about the many historical and contemporary contributions and experiences of this diverse community, and to build a culture of inclusivity and equity, not only during LGBTQIA+ History Month, but throughout the entire year, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cohen. Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank Chair Seizmar Heizer for presenting tonight's statement from the board and for guiding it through that process over the last week or so. I think it speaks volumes about where we stand as a, as a community, a school community. Making LGBTQIA+ history is exhausting, but it's critical work. I am proud of the policies and regulations we have implemented in Fairfax County Public Schools to protect and affirm our LGBTQIA+ students, particularly those who are transgender and gender expansive. Unfortunately, we have not always moved fast enough. Generations of students and staff have walked the halls of our buildings before they were treated with respect by our school division. Thankfully, we have made tremendous progress, especially in recent years. Of course, there will always be obstacles on the road to full equality. Take the governor's shameful and divisive model policy. It flies in the face of state law and legal precedent, trampling the rights and simple human dignity of transgender and gender expansive students. It forces their parents and guardians to jump through legal hoops to have their children respected. I am not surprised that so many students are speaking out in protest. They are part of a long, often forgotten, or unrecognized history of queer, usually young people, who were fed up with the bigotry of the status quo in which they lived and decided to stand up and change. From the Mattachine Society and the Daughters of Belidus in the 1950s, to the Gay Liberation Front and the Lavender Menace of the 1960s and 70s, from ACT UP and Lesbian Adventures in the 1980s and 90s, to the Transgender Education Association, FCPS Pride, and Pride Liberation Front here in Fairfax County today. This moment is just as much a part of our LGBTQ history and journey as Alan Turing cracking the Nazi Germany's Enigma Code, the Stonewall riots that helped launch the modern movement, the hate crime murders of Matthew Shepard and Brandon Tina, the Supreme Court decisions recognizing marriage equality, and so many other moments throughout our history. Our young people stand shoulder to shoulder with notable LGBTQIA+ history makers like Harvey Milk, Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Elaine Noble, Barbara Giddings, Audrey Lord, Bayard Rustin, not to mention countless, nameless, faceless activists lost to history and violence who were never recorded. I salute our young people for standing tall and weathering the attacks we've seen over the past two weeks, from online trolls, adult bullies who should know better, and political leaders who swore an oath to uphold our Constitution but see no room for LGBTQIA+ people in the rights it affords. Please know, I stand beside you and will do everything I can to support, protect, and defend your access to a quality and inclusive public education that values everything that makes you, you. You belong here, we are glad you are here, and we will not abandon you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Thank you. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your second?
I would, thank you. I was fortunate to grow up in a place where we all took care of each other. Different faiths, different political ideologies, different ages, different races, different backgrounds, and yet, we took care of each other, no questions asked. I remember when I broke my collarbone by deciding to ride my Huffy down Jill Martindale's rocky hill. I caught serious air and wound up shoulder-side down, laying in the middle of the street. I laid there fairly proud of my Evel Knievel impression, but completely broken and in a heap in the middle of the street. A neighbor heard me crying and came running. He carried me all the way home. He didn't ask me how I got there. He didn't judge any decisions I had made along the way to wind up in great need of his help. He just scooped me up, because in my neighborhood, there was no such thing as somebody else's kid. In these last few weeks, I've thought a lot about that. I've also had a whole lot of time in prayer, as our family observed Rosh Hashanah, the days of awe, and Yom Kippur. It's amazing what fasting will do to keep your mind busy. And every year at this time, I'm reminded of the words of Rabbi Hillel, when he was asked to explain the whole Torah, our Bible. asked to explain the whole Torah, our Bible, in Judaism. He said, "That which is hateful to you, do not do unto another. The rest is commentary." This resolution is to honor LGBTQIA+ History Month. But LGBTQIA+ History is our shared history. How we continue to treat our LGBTQIA+ students, staff, friends, and neighbors becomes our history, as a community, as a commonwealth, as a society. Will we treat our students the way we want our students treated? Will we, without judgment, protect our students? We get to choose how the next chapter of LGBTQIA+ History is written. In FCPS, we will stand on the right side of history. We will continue to protect our students.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. McLaughlin?
Every year, I look forward to this important month and recognition. My husband and I were very blessed to have the most amazing young son, who came out to us as gay at the middle of his junior year. And I mention that because, as his parents, we did watch him come through the Fairfax County Schools, and at times, as an elementary school kid, as a middle school kid, kids couldn't understand, why was a boy hanging out with so many girls? Why was he sitting at the table, having lunch with them? Why wasn't he sitting with all of the boys? And it came with some teasing and some bullying, and it made it tough. But thankfully, by the time he reached Woodson High School, the kids had matured a bit, and it became that if you bullied a gay kid, you were the one who actually was the person that was going to be mocked and criticized. But when I think about this month, when I think about my son, when I think about any LGBTQIA student, representation and how they learn in history matters, and, you know, Carl beat me to the punch mentioning Alan Turing. People may know him from the film The Imitation Game, the incredible British crypto analyst, who helped break the Nazi codes so that we could get the intelligence with British MI-6 to know what the Nazis were doing and to help beat them back and win the war. That was the first part of the story. That's the celebratory part of the story. The second half of the story that we know in so many of our other underrepresented groups in history is the tragic side of the story, that it was still a society that didn't accept gay people, that he was imprisoned for being a gay person, and he ultimately took his life. I say that because the richness of helping all of our children understand these histories, that it is to be mourned where we were, and it is also to be hopeful of where we are and where we will continue to be. And so this month, I just am very grateful to be a school system and part of a school board that wants to put such an emphasis on honoring this, calling out and recognizing it. And I want to thank everybody here in the audience tonight, in particular, for your beautiful rainbow flags, for your cheers, and for your presence in saying that we are all here for one another together. Let there be love.
Thank you. Ms. Marin?
Thank you. I look forward to a future where LGBTQIA+ History is simply part of American history, woven into the stories, truths, tragedies, and contributions of people who have made up this nation and continue to do so. Whether it's understanding the civil rights battles fought for rights of equality or contributions in any number of areas that have augmented the lives of others, of communities, this is truth and education that we're seeking, and truth and education is accepting, it's exploring, and it's celebrating American culture. And I pledge to do all that I can to ensure that FCPS provides this instruction to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Mr. Frisch spoke so beautifully. I'm not sure we can all follow what he shared, but I do want to say that we are here for you. It is very important that every single one of our students who are in our schools feel safe and that they feel protected, and I hope that you hear that this board is committed to that. That is the right thing to do, and that is the only thing to do. We are all dismayed with what has been happening over the past few weeks, and I have heard from countless parents who are very concerned about what possibly can be taking place in FCPS. But we are committed to ensuring that you are safe in our schools, and we are committed to ensuring that there is truth and education, as Ms. Marin said, so that you see yourselves in our curriculum, you see yourselves in our schools. So we are here for you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. Oftentimes, people ask, "Why do you all have all those resolutions?" It takes an hour to get through all the resolutions that you all have. I'm going to take this off a sec. It takes an hour to get through all the resolutions that you have on a typical school board agenda. What does that have to do with education? It has everything to do with education, because through these resolutions, through our recognitions, we are able to honor and celebrate all that is good in Fairfax County Schools. But it also provides us with the opportunity to have each of our children see themselves in what we honor. And so I just applaud the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion, but I also encourage each and every one of us to follow the spirit of the motion, which is to better understand LGBTQIA+ History and see that LGBTQIA+ History in the United States is American history. It goes back to our roots, and we need to celebrate the individual identities that are reflected in a resolution such as tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kies-Gammerow?
Thank you. I too thank the makers of our motion, and I just want to say unequivocally that every student in our schools deserves to feel safe, protected, cherished, and seen. There are no exceptions to that rule. When one works in education, it is our responsibility to tell the truth about history, all of it. And this is our history. Despite recent political statements that have been hurtful and harmful, I believe that I stand with my colleagues by saying that we will stand with you and protect you, and to make sure that when you come in our buildings, you understand that every student understands that is where they belong. Until every student receives that promise, we will work to make sure that they receive a caring culture for every student everywhere, not just in FCPS, not just in Fairfax County, not just in Virginia, but in this nation. Picking on children, using them for political purposes, is simply wrong, and we stand against it. We stand together against such shenanigans, and we are so glad that you're a part of who we are. Thank you.
Ms. Tolan?
I want to also thank the people that have read our motion here today, and the eloquent remarks of Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, and Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you so much. I just have a very short little statement. I've been in education for a long time, and sometimes people will ask me, "Why do you do what you do?" And it really boils down to one thing. I know what I want for students, and it is for them, as Ms. Karen Kies-Gammerow so eloquently said as well. I just want students to walk through our doors and feel like they are safe and welcome, and that we give them a learning experience that is geared to them as individuals and whatever their needs are. And this certainly, certainly includes students in our LGBTQIA+ community, and I just want you to know I'm here to support you.
Thank you. Ms. Bukarski?
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the makers of the motion for your eloquent remarks. I too just wanted to say, we are, of course, living through quite historic times right now, and that is difficult for many in our community. But as my colleagues have said, every child belongs in our schools. Sometimes, the only place where they find acceptance and, you know, respect is within our school buildings. And we have an obligation to our students to make sure that those school buildings are places where they want to come back every day. So thank you to so many of you who have come out tonight, and please know that we are dedicated. It is our mission always to ensure that every student in FCPS is respected, valued, belongs, and sees themselves as part of a larger community.
Thank you. Ms. Homesh?
Thank you. The vote on LGBTQ+ History Month today is quite timely, as my colleagues have shared. The resolution reminds us of the struggles of human history and what humans have faced in forging a place for everyone. It inspires us and gives us hope that we can find a better way. And it reminds us that history is never just singular, but is always plural, so that when we recognize and learn history, we can begin to dialogue and have fruitful conversations. Given the reality of what has unfolded in the past few weeks, today is not the time to comment on the merits or cons of the resolution itself. Today, my reflections are about justice, what the moment calls on us to do, and how we can come together to see, and to see with clarity in clouded times what the right thing to do is. It's about a fearless justice that stands for the oppressed, speaks up for the marginalized, and always, always upholds the truth. Some of us may be too hurt or afraid to sift through the dogmatism or ideological hard lines to see things through the lens of another. It's true that there are topics some of us will simply never see in the same way, since the beginning of time until the end of it, across human history. People have held different worldviews and perspectives about all kinds of topics. Today is not a day to discuss these things. The fact of the matter is that tough times in human history have also proven capable of bringing us together, and today, we come together for a clear purpose. We must firmly reject these attempts to silence, erase, dismiss, or harm transgender members of our community. And what is lost in the political climate today in all of this is actually the human element, the human element that we're all commanded to tap into. Every student and staff member deserves to exist in our system in safety, and even more importantly, with dignity. And even with differences, we can come together to defend the dignity of one another. The most basic form of dignity is to honor the chosen name of another person. Basic empathy demands that. The dignity of trans people has been hurt by the protests where I've even heard trash has been thrown, names have been called, and by the intentional misnaming that seeks to do nothing more than hurt. Misnaming kids, especially when it's malicious, is simply not free speech. This is a pattern of justifying hate speech and hiding behind free speech. Obviously, free speech is a core value, but we must all stand against the smokescreen of an excuse to harm vulnerable populations. Downplaying the harm of others is an abuse of power and really is tyranny. In this moment, regardless of our worldviews, let us tap into a deeper humanity to acknowledge the humanity of the transgender community and be ones who speak up for justice, because matters of justice are ones we must all be able to speak up about. The students have led in speaking clearly, and their power continues to inspire us. Let us listen and hear them and affirm them.
Ms. Homesh?
Who here accepts that kids trying their best to get through school and figure out who they are be harassed and disrespected? No one, and no one ought to.
Ms. Homesh?
My hope for today is that we can come together around this. I'll always strive to call for nuanced and public discourse, and without a doubt, further dialogue here is necessary to build understanding, but today is an important moment to acknowledge that it is an attempt to be seen, to be recognized, and to be told you matter.
Ms. Homesh, you've had quite a bit longer than the timer.
Today, I stand with those who say, "Our transgender students and staff, you matter, and it is our job to protect you, it is our job to support you." And with my vote today, I hope you know that I'm here to stand up for you.
Thank you. And just briefly, because we have quite a few recognitions for today, and I know our audience is waiting to come speak to us, I will just say my remarks. And I will just say that I don't understand. I don't understand. We are all human. I don't understand. We are all human. Why would anybody try to other, dismiss, bully, act like we are not all human? I just don't understand. Our trans students, our LGBTQIA+ students, all of our students are part of the beautiful, diverse breadth of humanity, and we love you, and we protect you, and we want you, and we value you, and you belong here in FCPS. And we, as a board, will do whatever we need to do to protect you and make sure your school community is a safe school community for you. And we need to hear from you on that, because if it's not a safe school community, if things are happening, please tell us, because we need to know. And I'm so grateful to my colleagues, I'm so grateful to Ms. Cohen and Mr. Frisch for bringing this resolution, and also for your hard work in championing that statement, and I'm grateful to be able to work alongside you so we could get to our board to, you know, unanimous support for that statement. It is so important, when we're making important statements, to have all of our voices reflected in support. And so I really appreciate the flexibility that you all had this week in listening to our colleagues' voices and making sure you made space for all of us to be able to contribute so we could stand strong in support of our LGBTQIA+ students. And I just want to say to all of our staff, our families, our students who are scared, we got you. We got you. Let us know if we're failing in that, and we will fix it. But we got you. You belong here. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Agenda item 2.07, Dyslexia Awareness Month Resolution. I call on Ms. Marin for the resolution.
Dyslexia Awareness Month. Whereas dyslexic children and adults face difficulty with the phonological component of language, and so have trouble matching the letters they see with the sounds those letters and combinations of letters make, presenting a struggle to read fluently, spell words correctly, and learn a second language, among other challenges. And whereas the Virginia Department of Education has established a definition of dyslexia in part as a specific learning disability that is neurobiological in origin. And whereas dyslexia can present differently in individuals, often causing challenges with reading, writing, and spelling, but also affects speaking, remembering, understanding, speed, movement, and basic math. And whereas the difficulties of dyslexia have no connection to individuals' overall intelligence, and is rather an unexpected difficulty in reading for an individual who has the intelligence to be a much better reader. And people with dyslexia often are fast and creative thinkers with strong reasoning abilities. And whereas the onset and severity of dyslexia varies for each individual and impacts up to 15% to 20% of the population, according to the International Dyslexia Association. And whereas dyslexia is a different way of learning and thinking, and individuals with dyslexia require specific instruction with strategies designed for their success in achieving literacy. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools has developed a division-wide literacy plan that ensures comprehensive, pre-K-12, research-based reading instruction that is aligned with the science of reading, so that all students, including those with dyslexia, may achieve their full potential. And whereas students, educators, and their families will benefit from increased awareness about the nature of dyslexia, and the indicators of dyslexia that can lead to early identification and intervention, and the combination of strengths and difficulties that individuals with dyslexia can have. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes October 2022 as Dyslexia Awareness Month, and encourages all residents and FCPS staff to learn more about dyslexia, including identifying dyslexia, knowing supports available for use by educators and families, and highlighting the success that individuals with dyslexia can have in their careers and life. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your resolution?
I think what's so important about this resolution is the component of raising awareness. I am so thrilled to share this resolution, not only for the importance it has in my own family every day, but because the responses I have received from the community about elevating dyslexia and truly raising awareness shows that it is valuable to highlight it today and throughout the month. So relatedly, this month also speaks to raising awareness about dysgraphia, which is another, which is related... which is related to neurobiological challenges with writing. And again, there is another condition that I've heard feedback as, "Wow, you're speaking about this now, you're raising awareness about it now." I find with dyslexia, you just don't know what you don't know. So in the last few years, I've seen awareness of dyslexia really increase in FCPS and ultimately be encapsulated by the movement here to, and even in Virginia, to use the science of reading to ensure that all children are literate, but especially help those children who do struggle with dyslexia. So I'll leave it at that, and I'm really pleased to elevate this. And also thank our staff for the number of resources, including a Dyslexia Handbook that is available on our website. There's a lot of information, and we have services to help students. So please do reach out to your students, teachers, if you think that they might have a struggle.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara, would I just speak to your second?
Thank you. I am honored to be able to support my colleague in raising awareness about dyslexia. As some of you may know, for the last 20 years, I have, or so I've advocated for children, much of which involve the educational arena. And it is heartbreaking and yet an opportunity when we discover that a child has dyslexia. I had a case recently where the child was actually 17 years old before she figured that out. But the good news is that we have so many more resources now. Dyslexia is actually fairly common. Between 15% and 20% of the population has dyslexia. And Fairfax has done a great deal of work since 2015, when we officially acknowledged it. We've added a literacy screener, created the Dyslexia Handbook, as my colleague said, and improved instructional support. And so, this board is here to support every student. We know that every child is capable of achieving, and we want to work together with our community and our families in supporting our students who may be dealing with dyslexia. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bukarski? Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Yes, thank you, and thank you to the makers of the motion. I think this is such an important area. It's one that came to our attention as early as 2015, when we started recognizing it. And it was largely because of the advocates coming to us and saying, "We need your help." "We know our children are exceptional children, but they need help because of dyslexia." And that is when we introduced the screener. But I also think that this is a great opportunity to demonstrate how with the appropriate tools and supports, people who have dyslexia can rise to such incredible levels of leadership. And some of the most famous people in this country have had dyslexia, starting with George Washington. George Washington, Albert Einstein. In Europe, Leonardo da Vinci, one of the best engineers and artists of all times. A more modern artist being Pablo Picasso. And a whole range of people who are in the arts, including Steven Spielberg and Whoopi Goldberg. So I encourage, when you talk to students with dyslexia, to share with them that they have a rich history of supporters, but also of famous people who have, with the appropriate tools and supports, been able to overcome the challenge of being dyslexic.
Thank you. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Agenda item 2.08, Cooper Middle School Band Recognition. I call on Ms. Tolan for the recognition.
Okay, first of all, we need another, or a round of applause for that incredible rendition of the National Anthem. Thank you so much to Cooper for that. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, I am honored to recognize the Cooper Band and Band Director Matthew Baker for the program's excellence as winners of the 2021 Sutherland Cup and other multiple honors. Located in McLean, the Cooper Band program features 180 amazing students in three concert ensembles: a jazz band, a percussion and percussion ensemble. Under the direction of Mr. Baker and Ms. Singer, they're here with us this evening, the Cooper Band has performed at the Virginia Music Educators Association Conference in 2017, and were the first Virginia middle school band to perform at the Music for All National Concert Band Festival in 2019. They received the 2019 National Band Association Blue Ribbon Program of Excellence Award. In June of 2022, they were awarded the prestigious Sutherland Silver Cup by the John Philip Sousa Foundation. They will again be the featured middle school band at the Virginia Music Educators Association Conference in this November. The Sutherland Cup is known as the most prestigious international honor a middle or junior high school band program can receive. A middle school band program must achieve and maintain high standards of excellence in concert performance over a period of seven years under the same conductor to be eligible for the Sutherland Cup. The Cooper Bands have performed at the White House Easter Egg Roll, recorded for NASA's recent Artemis One launch, and performed clinics in Boston Symphony Hall and Atlanta Woodard Arts Center. They actively work with artists to reduce commissions and consortiums to increase the amazing repertoire of music for middle school bands all over the country. Congratulations on this esteemed award and honors to Mr. Baker, Mrs. Singer, and the entire Cooper Band program, Ms. Barrow, the principal there, and all of the Cooper Middle School students and families. We wish you the very best in your future musical and academic endeavors. Your work in our school community has a huge positive impact on so many levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Before my board members have a chance to make remarks, if they wish, I would like to recognize former school board member Pat Hines, who is here with us this evening. Thank you, Pat, for being here. If any of my colleagues would like to make remarks, Ms. Keys-Gamara, did you want to speak? Great, thank you. Congratulations, Cooper Middle School Band. It is an incredible, incredible honor, and I personally know how important the arts are to our students, to their development, academic, socially, emotional, making those connections, those friends, the ties between communication, between math, and just the beauty that music and art bring to our world. So congratulations, we are so proud of you. And with that, I would like to invite the Cooper Middle School Band and staff to please join us at the DICE for a photo. I'll ask my colleagues to please remain in the front at the DICE for the next four photos. Thank you. Come on up, Cooper Middle School. I would like to invite those here this evening in support of the Custodian Appreciation Week of Recognition to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here this evening in support of the Custodian Appreciation Week of Recognition to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here this evening in support of the National School Principals Month Resolution to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite all those here this evening in support of the LGBTQIA History Month Resolution to please join the board for a photo.
I would like to invite all those here in support of the Dyslexia Awareness Month Resolution to please join the board for a photo.
Agenda item 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as the capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that encounter the spirit and letter of the school division's non-discrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the school board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. As a reminder, speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual before or during their remarks. Shouting and outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Shouting and outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. We are grateful for those who have come to speak to us today, and we thank you for your cooperation. Our first speaker is Natasha.
Good evening. My name is Natasha and I am a high school senior in the Sully District. I'm also a lead organizer in the Pride Liberation Project, a coalition of queer students working to uplift the LGBTQI+ community. I'm here today to discuss the revisions to the Model Transgender Policies released by the Virginia Department of Education on September 16th. These new policies not only remove the previous guidelines school boards are required to enforce, but they counter the very intention of the original law, to affirm and protect transgender and gender nonconforming students using evidence-based practices. There is nothing evidence-based about these new guidelines. Transgender and gender nonconforming students would have to pass through hurdles just to be respected. Closeted students could be outed to their parents by school faculty. By enacting this law, the lives and safety of all queer students would be jeopardized. As a queer student, I am terrified, not only for myself, but for the countless friends of mine whose lives could be destroyed by these provisions. Being queer in school is difficult enough. Going to extreme lengths to ensure that being openly queer is simply not possible for the vast majority of students is inhumane. My biggest fear is what could happen if this draft went into effect. Currently, 50% of LGBTQI+ students in FCPS are depressed, 50%. If their rights, safe spaces, and self-expression were taken away, this number would only skyrocket. Historically, schools have provided mental health resources for these issues. Under the new guidelines, many queer students such as myself would have nowhere to go and no one to turn to. Students who are already isolated and ostracized from school environments would be kicked to the curb completely. We cannot let this happen. We cannot let our school system fail a group of students that it is required by law to serve. We cannot let queer students suffer another blow. If these new guidelines to the Model Transgender Policies go into effect, please reject them and please signal to the Virginia Department of Education that this is unconstitutional. Please take concrete action against them, and we need you to protect us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Madeline.
Hello. My name is Maddie, and I'm a student at Oakton High School and a member of the Pride Liberation Project. I'm here tonight to speak about the Virginia Department of Education's proposed 2022 Model Transgender Policies and the devastating effects they would have on the queer student body. First of all, I'd like to emphasize that these policies are using parental rights as a cover to invalidate transgender students. They are blatantly discriminatory and prevent students from receiving gender-affirming care, such as correct name and pronoun usage, access to counseling, and participation in extracurricular activities corresponding to their gender without explicit parental consent. These policies not only take away the individual rights of, but force schools to out-gender queer students and enable the oppression of all queer students. I'm open about my sexuality to most of my friends, but not to my parents. It terrifies me that the VDOE views my rights as a person to be less important than my parents' rights to information. Coming to terms with and expressing my sexuality has been a long process, one that I'm still going through. I've had panic attacks, anxiety episodes, and full-on mental breakdowns over it, and that's without the added pressure of possibly being forcefully outed to my family. All students, but queer students especially, should be able to seek out counseling and feel safe at school. These policies deny them that right. Without the protections that these policies aim to take away, many queer students will be left with no one to turn to. The VDOE states that all children should be valued and respected, yet they continue to marginalize queer students. I can't express enough that these policies are catastrophically bad for the transgender student community and open the door for discrimination against all queer students. No one should have to go to school in constant fear of who they are. FCPS needs to step up now to prevent these policies from being implemented in schools. Please, don't let queer students be cast to the side. Don't stay silent and prove to the state that we matter less than other students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Finn.
Hello. My name is Finn. I'm a senior at Lake Braddock, and I'm going to tell you about my experience as an openly queer student these past two years. I never had any problem before the pandemic. No matter how I presented or what I wore, I was allowed to be me. However, after COVID, that's where the problems started. I don't have a normal style, and I don't use traditional pronouns. I sincerely believe that the reason these students have gotten so bold is because they see their parents acting like this. They see their parents bully transgender kids constantly, calling us predators, slurs, and establishing to their children that harassment and bullying of people who don't look exactly like them is okay, encouraged even. I was posted on an Instagram page last year that was specifically for targeting LGBTQ+ kids. They posted my location in the school, saying that they wanted me to get beaten up to humble me. I've been called slurs, had trash thrown at me multiple times, and even sexually harassed since then because of what I look like and how I present. I am not alone. Queer kids are constantly targeted because of who we are, but we will not be silenced. When I repressed who I was because of fear of what others thought, I was suicidal. I hated myself. But I would rather be hated by others for how I present than hate myself because I'm not honest about who I am. This new model policy will never silence me and other trans kids. Harassment of others because of them being different is wrong, no matter what others tell you. If FCPS adopts this new model policy, it will show these parents and children that this behavior is okay and encouraged. Transgender kids must be supported and protected, and it is your responsibility as adults to support us. Adoption of this policy is lethal for some trans kids. We have the right to feel like and be treated as human beings. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patrick.
I'm Patrick. I'm a high school senior at Thomas Jefferson High School, and I'm here with the Pride Liberation Project to talk about the new VDOE policy. One of my friends is gender nonconforming. They're not able to testify today because it's not safe for them to do so. Their story is featured in a Washington Post article titled "Virginia's Trans Kids Fear Being Outed by Youngkin Policy," and they gave me permission to elevate their story here today. My friend spoke anonymously with a journalist because they're not out to their parents yet. If they did, that would probably lead to them losing financial support for college or even losing housing. Current FCPS policy forbids school staff from outing students to their parents without student permission, but the model policy would nullify that. If that happens, my friend's counselor, who knows that my friend is gender nonconforming, is likely to out them. My friend is not alone in their family situation. The Trevor Project found this year that fewer than 1 in 3 transgender youth live with supportive families. Worse, the University of Chicago reported in 2018 that queer youth have a 120% increased risk for homelessness due to being rejected by their families. Quoted in this Washington Post article, Governor Youngkin responds to this fear by saying, "I would say, trust your parents." But he fails to consider the relationship that some queer students have with unsupportive parents. When my friend even suggested possibly being transgendered to their parents a couple months ago, they were not allowed to speak to their little sister for an entire week. A lot of the support for forced coddling claims that school staff should not be able to keep secrets from parents. But this isn't about teachers or counselors. This is about our futures. When I hear that my friend is scared, dreading for the moment that they get an email from their counselor when everything could fall apart, I'm worried with them. If my friend trusts their parents to kick them out of the house, we should trust them as well. This board must openly reject the model policy and call out to the VDOE. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marie Lewis.
Good evening.
We can hear you.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you regarding Governor Youngkin's changes to policies affecting some of the most vulnerable members of society, trans, non-binary, and gender expansive youth. I'm Marie of the Woodlawn District, and my pronouns are they/them or she/her. I envy Gen Z trans youth. They have opportunities and options that were not available to me growing up in the '70s and '80s. I did work as an activist with Queer Nation and act up in the early '90s to help that process along, but did not have the opportunity to really begin to understand myself and my gender until I was 48. I was 48 when I started my own transition, and all the lost years where I was living a half-life haunt me. So now Governor Youngkin is proposing to take away the protections that have been given to trans students over the past two years, when they could feel affirmed and accepted and put in place policies that will cause them direct harm and place their lives in safe home environments at risk from parents who don't want any queer or trans youth in their lives. It seems to me that Youngkin's new policy is in violation of the ADA, as gender dysphoria is a protected disability under the ADA, at least in the Fourth Circuit. Also, according to the EEOC, intentional misgendering or deadnaming someone is a form of sexual harassment. If Governor Youngkin's purpose with this policy is to provide a safe and healthy environment for learning for children, he has failed. If the goal is to eliminate trans students from Fairfax County, well, give it a few years and he'll have succeeded, either by forcing them back into hiding in later years of counseling sessions and related bills, or by increasing the suicide rate. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Latham.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Latham, and I'm here tonight in the first week of Augmented and Alternative Communication Awareness Month to ask again that FCPS prioritize developing policies and instructions for students who need and use AAC in the classroom. Earlier this year, I worked with my state delegate to introduce a bill that would have required school districts to provide key staff members training to ensure that meaningful AAC-based instruction is offered to students like my son Calvin on the first day of school. We did this because year after year, Calvin and students like him have walked into FCPS classrooms with eager teachers and staff who don't realize until we tell them that they need more than operational training to appropriately support their AAC users. Our effort at the General Assembly ultimately failed after lobbyists deposed it. Just handle this through the IEP process, they said, as if we were newbies to the system. Magically, after raising the issue at the General Assembly, his ESY team got the training and staffing necessary to support his AAC-related goals, and it was the first time he ever met his communication goal within an original timeframe that his IEP deemed reasonable. So imagine my disappointment when we learned at an IEP meeting last week that his case manager, teacher, and aide had not been trained in the strategies that were developed and implemented this summer. This will be yet another year where Calvin will wait months until the school team is at least as proficient as his most reliable mode of communication, and no amount of rewriting an IEP is likely to prevent this from happening again. It is time that you all start taking action and AAC-based instruction just as seriously as you do instruction on world language and other courses. I ask that you direct the superintendent and convene a group of stakeholders to develop a model policy, an AAC Users' User's Bill of Rights that demonstrates FCPS's commitment to language development, not only for those who use ASL, but for all AAC users. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Willow Wokey.
School board members and Dr. Reed, I am Willow Wokey, she/her, president of the Transgender Education Association of Greater Washington and member of the FCPS Pride Board. I've had kids in FCPS since 1995, and this is my last school year. I'm here to reiterate support for Regulation 2603 and opposition to the proposed policies by the Virginia Department of Education. As a parent, I know parents' rights are important. So are the rights of children. Sometimes children are afraid to tell their parents things, things the child may perceive their parents will disapprove of. As a child, your family is supposed to be your safety net, providing basic needs like food, shelter, and clothing. When my middle son was a senior, he refused to get his college applications in. There were arguments, deals, broken promises, and frustration all around. One day, it finally came out. He was afraid to tell us he had enlisted in the Marines. He was afraid we would disapprove, try to change his mind, make his home life feel less safe. I'm sure he had already felt unsafe holding in that secret. When a child thinks they may be trans or gender diverse or just a little different, they are likely to be afraid to talk about it with anyone. If they are lucky, they may be able to confide in that teacher with the rainbow flag, someone who is safe, and can't take away their food, shelter, and clothing. The child may already know whether a parent will disapprove. They may be afraid because our society keeps attacking trans kids. They are being used as political pawns. The proposed policies only make this worse for trans and other queer students. They take away a safe space, not their food, shelter, and clothing, but the space where they have the opportunity to explore and understand themselves a little better before they go home and maybe talk to their parents, who will hopefully support them. Also, teach truth, teach queer history, teach anti-racism. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Binkley.
Hello. I lost my hard copy at the rally. So I'm reading from my phone. But before I get into what I'm here to talk about, I just have to say that listening to the students speak to you guys at school board meetings reassures me of the future. Their strength, their dignity, and their eloquence just renews my faith so much, and I want to thank you guys for being there. But then there's the other thing that's a sidebar about what has been going on most of tonight. I need to remind you of something. In March of 2020, two and a half years ago, the Virginia Legislature restored the right of public employees to collective bargaining. Other districts have moved forward, and at least six are in the late stages of reestablishing collective bargaining for their employees. Fairfax County government side approved and issued their ordinance in May of 2021, a year and a half ago. But not so Fairfax County public schools. We still do not have a clear and cogent resolution for bargaining, nor a publicly-described path for getting there. Your 27,000 employees stood by this board and by Gatehouse and all of their students through a terrible pandemic, through attacks from radical political operatives, and they deserve to have you stand by them now and provide them with a way forward to work under a clear and...
Our next speaker is Emily Vanderhoff.
Good evening, Chair Seizmar Heizer, Dr. Reed, and members of the board. My name is Emily Vanderhoff. I'm an FCPS teacher and Fairfax County resident. I'm also a proud member of my union, FCFT, and I hope to cover a few topics tonight. The most important thing that I came here to say is that as leaders of the school system, the most important charge you have is the safety and well-being of our students. When VDOE released the proposed model policies on September 16th, the safety and well-being of every trans and non-binary student in Virginia was threatened. I ask you to vocally oppose these policies and show that FCPS truly affirms all students by naming that trans and non-binary students are harmed by these proposed policies. I ask you to take concrete actions to ensure that they are safe and affirmed at school. I appreciate Ms. Seizmar Heizer's statement from the start of the meeting and each comment to the resolution from each of you, and I hope to see the message reiterated and acted on by all FCPS leadership. I urge you to meet with the students of Pride Liberation Project and trans and non-binary staff members and families to hear their concerns and take steps to make our school system safer and more supportive for them. I also ask you to firmly denounce the attacks against students and staff speaking out in support of trans students. Next, I ask you to take up and pass the Teach Truth Resolution. Our students deserve an education that is culturally representative and teaches historical truth. As educators, we need your vocal and unwavering support in order to provide this education. And finally, I ask you to add the collective bargaining resolution to the agenda of your next meeting. It's approaching a year since the work group started drafting resolution language. The process has been delayed for long enough, and it's time to release a public draft and join other Virginia districts like Richmond and Arlington in passing a meaningful collective bargaining resolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erin Queen. Our next speaker is Air Queen.
Hello. My name is Air Queen, and I am a transgender, non-binary, autistic teacher in Fairfax County. I am on the FCPS Pride Board, and I will be a parent of an FCPS student next year when my daughter enters kindergarten. I'll use, I use they/them and them pronouns. At this point, I imagine that everyone here has heard the devastating statistics surrounding what happens when transgender young people are purposefully excluded or discriminated against. We have all heard that as few as one affirming adult can make a meaningful and impactful difference in the lives of transgender students, and that oftentimes, schools are the first place where a student feels comfortable enough to express who they are. The information and research supporting inclusion and protection of transgender and gender expansive students is readily available for anyone to find and has even been published in reputable peer-reviewed journals such as Pediatrics by the American Academy of Pediatrics. All of that is crucial, but it is something that always seems to get left out. Transgender people, whether they are students or adults, are people first. We have dignity and autonomy, and we belong in every space. Trans students belong in the same spaces as their cisgender peers, and if that means that extra rules or protections are needed to keep our students safe, we need to do everything possible to keep those regulations in place. The blatant discrimination that has been shown by the VDOE and their new model policy needs to be called what it is. And our own regulation, Regulation 2603, needs to be maintained and reinforced with actions and not just pretty words or platitudes. Our students need to be protected. Our students need to be heard. They are not tomorrow's leaders. They are truly today's leaders, and we really need to follow their lead. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is George Becerra. George Becerra.
Good evening and thank you. So as one of the last speakers tonight on a very important, very personal issue, there's a lot that you've already heard, and so I want to, I'm going to go off script a little bit, and I want to talk about, I wanted to make this personal for you and to share why this is so important. We're talking about the support and safety of transgender students. The first thing I want to say is, when you look behind me and you see these amazing young people, I want to say how grateful I am for them to be here tonight, for them to have the courage to be here, to speak for themselves, but not just for themselves, but to speak for their peers that might not be able to be here as their authentic selves tonight. And that's huge. That's brave, and that's courageous, and I'm grateful. There's one student back there that I'm even a little bit more grateful for, and the reason for that is because two years ago, I almost lost him to depression, to gender dysphoria, to anxiety. And I can tell you with certainty that without the support and affirmation that he received from his school counselors and his teachers and a lot of other work at home, I think our story would have been a lot different. So this is real, it's legitimate, it's personal. I appreciate everyone's words tonight, but they're just words. What we need to see is action. So in addition to your words, we need to hear publicly and unequivocally that you will reject these new model policies because of the effects that they can and will have on our students and families. I appreciate your words, but we got you is not a plan. We need to see a plan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Dwyer.
Thank you. Before I start, I believe I had an ASL interpreter?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. My pronouns are he and him. The 2022 model policies claim to support the rights of all students. However, if you read more into it, these rights do not extend to anyone who is not cisgender. Section 3, Statutory Authority and Requirements, is the only place that lists model policies concerning the, quote, "model policies concerning the treatment of transgender students that address, quote, 'common issues.'" One of these statutes is related to the, quote, "identification of students." However, this statute is given several caveats in Section 3D of Appendix 1 in the sample policy. This says that even if a trans student has had changes to their official record regarding their name, gender, or pronouns, a school division cannot, quote, "compel school division personnel or other students to address or refer to students in any manner that would violate their constitutionally protected rights." Basically, if teachers or students refuse to use a trans student's name or pronouns, even after they have been officially changed, they cannot be stopped. It is not free speech to misgender or deadname someone. This is one of the many examples of the rights of cisgender students being prioritized in these model policies. The right to not be deadnamed or misgendered is one of the many fundamental and necessary rights for all trans, non-binary, and gender non-conforming, as well as all queer students. By not ensuring these rights, the 2022 model policies will create school environments that are distressing and unsafe for them, especially for those where the only place that they could be comfortable expressing themselves without fear, judgment, or hostility was at school. Please oppose these inhumane policies. They have no place in our, in our schools, our county schools, our Commonwealth schools, or anywhere. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sierra.
Hi, my name is Sierra. I also go by Ranger. I use they/them and he/him pronouns interchangeably, and I was not aware that I was speaking tonight, so I do not have anything prepared. What I can tell you, though, is my experiences. I'm a trans student in Fairfax County, and that is one of the most terrifying things I've ever known. Existing as a trans person is hard, even with the new, with the previous school board regulations, the ones that affirmed trans people, the ones that were here to support us. And the new model policies will take that away. They will hurt people like me, they will hurt me, they will hurt my community, they will hurt everybody that I care about. They will, they take away some of the fundamental things that we've relied upon, to be safe in schools and to be safe in homes. Therefore, I'm asking all of you to stop these policies in Fairfax County. I'm asking you all to take direct action against these policies. I'm asking you to say no to the Virginia Department of Education and to Governor Glenn Youngkin. Thank you.
That was the last speaker for this evening. We do have three video testimonies, and the first video is from Sophia.
Hi, I'm Sophia. I'm in sixth grade at Fox Mill Elementary School, and I strongly oppose of Governor Youngkin's new policy against LGBTQ+ students. Although I am not transgender, I am an ally. I have trans friends, and I believe that everyone has rights, everyone has a right in this, in this safe community. My dream is that everyone gets called by their pronouns and gender identity. Everyone deserves a chance to learn in this safe space. Thank you for your time.
Our next video is from Debbie Kilpatrick.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Reed. I'm Debbie Kilpatrick, Vice President of Outreach for Fairfax County Council PTA. A major focus of our council's advocacy is student wellness, which includes the mental health crisis going on within our county, state, and nationwide. The 2022 Virginia PTA legislative priorities includes advocacy to fund the standards of quality, to provide unified mental health teams at the nationally recommended ratios, and support for school safety with funding to implement evidence-based strategies and increase mental health resources to reduce bullying, school violence, and shootings. National PTA's Resolution on Children's Emotional Health and Mental Health Awareness states that PTA should strongly encourage efforts to support comprehensive school mental health programs that include adequate access to school psychologists, school counselors, and school social workers. The evidence to offer more in-school mental health supports is front and center, and we ask the school division to seek out all options to increase the number of these critical school staff. On Monday, the U.S. Secretary of Education announced two grant programs established to increase access to mental health services for students by increasing the number of school-based mental health professionals in an effort to address the nation's mental health crisis. We encourage FCPS leadership to explore these funding opportunities in support of our students. Thank you.
Our final video is from Rodrigo Soto.
My name is Rodrigo Soto, and I'm a 2012 graduate of Lewis High School, formerly known as Lee High School. I'm speaking today to ask our school board to strongly reject Governor Youngkin's ugly, harmful proposed policies when it comes to dealing with LGBTQ students, particularly trans students. When I was in high school, one of the first people I came out to as gay was my English teacher. At that point in my life, I already knew what many in my family thought of gay people, having been called derogatory words in both English and Spanish since I was young. I chose to come out to my English teacher because she taught me the power of using my own voice to express who I am, the values I hold, and to be unapologetic in my own truth. Thanks to her, I was able to build a supportive community, a chosen family that loved and cherished me, and that helped me navigate obstacles that nobody should have to go through, including having my own father tell me that I would die when I finally came out of the closet to him. Today, trans students disproportionately face some of the cruelest attacks by both other students and even adults. These policies would worsen an already hostile environment. Instead of adopting these poorly thought-out policies, Fairfax County should be a leader in fostering an inclusive learning environment for all LGBTQ people who call our community
Thank you. Agenda Item 3.02, Superintendent Matters, I call on Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Chair Sizemore Heiser, and thank all of you who took the time to show up this evening and share your truth. We appreciate that. Thank you. Since the last board meeting on September 15th, I've made a number of school visits. It's been a very active time as the school year has begun. I want to share that I've been at Rocky Run Middle School, Brookfield Elementary, and Colin Powell Elementary, and we've seen some amazing teaching and learning activities and events occurring during that time. I've also been able to attend a number of extracurricular activities, field hockey games, football games, and the band, Herndon Band Competition on Saturday, September 24th. And our students, whether they're in the classroom or out in the fields, or as we saw again this evening, our music is such a powerful learning experience for so many young people. In terms of community conversations, the 27 Pyramid Conversations are continuing. Recently, I've been at Herndon, Westfield, South County, Marshall Robinson, and Mount Vernon, and it really is, I think, so important to hear from our community, students and staff who have attended those meetings. We're down to 10 meetings left, which means we've completed 17 of them. So if you have an interest in coming out yet, please check the website for community conversations. Also want to remind families that Impact Aid forums have gone out to our military families, and the commander and I were able to do a video this week, which will go out to our military families. And again, a reminder that our military families are a very large part of our community. We're actually, the number of military families in our school division is comparable to the Virginia Beach City School size of the entire division. So just want to, again, be grateful for the service and commitment that those who serve and their families make each and every day. I'll also be hosting a community conversation for our military families Thursday, October 13th, to hear their perspectives as we launch our strategic planning work as well. I've also had the opportunity to engage with specific student groups these past few weeks. I've met with the Student Advisory Council, as well as our Student Equity Ambassador Leaders, and I think I've seen Student School Board Representative Togby at both events, actually, at the Student Advisory Council, as well as the Student Equity Ambassador Leaders. I also had an opportunity Sunday afternoon to visit with the FCPS Pride Group and met and spoke with several students Sunday afternoon as well at that event, and again, continued to be impressed with our students, their perspective, and it is true, they do represent leadership for today, not in the future. Want to shout out again the Custodian Appreciation Week. I know Ms. Corbett Sanders talked about my enthusiasm for our custodial staff. They are amazing. They make 37-year-old buildings look new and take such very good care of our schools, our students, and our staff. So just want to thank them mightily. Also want to remind us that we did have World Teachers Day this week, and just recognition for all of our teachers who have taken on Herculean tasks with class sizes, mentoring colleagues new to the profession, maintaining unbelievable schedules as we work to support our students returning to school for the second year following our in, or out-of-school opportunities during the pandemic. Finally, I also want to mention that I met with our transportation team this morning and had a tour of the Loring, or no, Lorton Transportation Center. It's quite an, quite a operation. I had an opportunity to also visit with one of our very experienced bus drivers, Debbie, who's been driving for 33 years and had just finished putting spiders in her bus, which I thought was a, for Halloween. It was, they were not real. I know, I'm not a spider person. They weren't, yeah, they were fake spiders. Thank you. But you know, she talked about her students, she drives for Holly Elementary School, and just talked about just how much she loves what she does, and I think, what a joy that is to be able to do what you love each and every day, and just want to thank Debbie and all our transportation colleagues. Please stay tuned for strategic planning. There will be more communication coming out. I hope that all those who came this evening to speak will also lend their voice to our strategic planning conversation. It's important that we're all at that table. And then finally, just a reminder to share your feedback on in-person instruction and continuity of services. Our ESER $3 community survey has gone out, and please check the website. We want to hear your feedback on our resource stewardship for our ESER dollars. So thank you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Agenda Item 3.03, Student Representative Matters, I call on Ms. Togby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quickly, before they leave, I want to shout out and thank all the students that came to speak at tonight's meeting. You guys are the true superstars, and I am so proud of each and every one of you guys. Good evening, everyone, and happy Thursday. As we wrap up Week 7, I believe, there is quite a bit to unpack. So the official list of student representatives to advisory committees were finalized, and I have to say, all of the students who applied were absolutely amazing, and they were all so passionate about the experiences of our student body, and they truly emphasized the importance of student voice behind, in the behind-the-scenes discussions. So quickly, congratulations to Yazzy, Sanvi, Landon, Christian, Eden, Jasmine, Shanti, Andrea Gase, Ami, Haskew, Suzu, and Opal. Super proud of this amazing group, and I can't wait to see everything that they do at their meetings. And in the last two weeks, I've gotten to meet with both student groups, SAC and SEALs. And in the last two weeks, I've gotten to meet with both student groups, SAC and SEALs. They met for the very first time, and I'm super grateful for the chance to work with them again and to see what amazing work we're going to be able to present to the leadership team this year. I can tell you that they are both off to an amazing start, and they've already started documenting project ideas and action items. I was able to attend the Herndon High School Showcase of Bands, which I was told is the second-largest competition in Virginia, and let me just say, they were absolutely amazing. I couldn't help but think about all the coordination required to get at least half of the show done, so props to them. With the news that came out of the governor's office, I have to say that I am just really proud of what students have been able to do the last few weeks. They've spoken their minds, and they did so in a massive way. There was a statewide walkout where many students who were in Fairfax participated, and they, they call Fairfax home. And I want to make something really clear. It is part of your job to respect, protect, and empower all students in our county. I know at the start of the board meeting, we made a statement, and I, I want to emphasize, do more than just make a statement. Release that out to the public. Support students by being in contact with GSA leads and sponsors. Step up in the sense where be more than talk, and I want to see action. Andrea Grace, who is an FCPS student and also works with the Pride Liberation Project, said something that really resonated with me, and she honestly, she said this best, like, it's the best way I could probably summarize all of this. Revoking transgender protections now would be like dialing back the clock. It'd be like telling students, we don't really care, you're not really who you believe yourself to be. So please take a moment and sit with that quote. Lastly, next week, Dr. Reed will be at Oakton, Fairfax, and Centerville for her community conversations, so students, please attend them. I will be hitting up both of those leadership classes for all those schools. So be sure to check out the website for all that information, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Togby. Agenda Item 4.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Close. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a motion.
I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1 through 254B1.
Is there a second? Ms. Maron? By Ms. Maron, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? That is Ms. Bukarski, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Maron, and Ms. Kiesgahmara. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch? That motion passes. I call on Mr. Frisch for a motion.
I move to deny the grievability appeal of the employee discussed in closed session and to direct the superintendent to take steps discussed in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Anderson, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? That is Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Maron. All those opposed? Ms. Kiesgahmara, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. McLaughlin. That motion passes. Agenda Item 4.02, ESER 3 Allocation of Funds to Support Academic Intervention COVID Case Managers and Monitors. I call on Ms. Tolan for the motion.
I move that the school board approve the reallocation of funds to support Project 9 Academic Intervention and Project 27 COVID Case Managers' Supervision Monitors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. Several amendments to the ESER 3 grant are necessary for FY '23. Since the amendments are greater than $100,000, they must be approved by the school board. First, FCPS is still seeing COVID cases in our schools and the need to report cases to the Fairfax County Department of Health in the case of outbreaks. COVID case managers are needed in schools to allow our administrators to concentrate on supporting and coaching teachers and staff in academic work. In addition, schools have found the monitor positions to be important and helpful, to monitor students to allow more planning time for teachers, to make sure all classrooms, lunchrooms, and playgrounds are sufficiently supervised each day, even with a substitute teacher shortage. I've heard story after story about the wonderful monitors our schools have hired, mothers from the community, retirees, aspiring teachers, et cetera. The monitor positions are a game changer, as the principals say. In order to provide the schools this year the same level of funding that was expended in FY '22, we are moving money from two accounts. A $4.1 million amount in carryover from Project 27, which is, Project 27 is the monitor account, so it's unspent monitor money from last year, just because we had a hard time recruiting enough people into those monitor positions. So we saved some money, but we need that money this year, so we're moving it over. An additional $1.9 million will be directed from Project 1, which is our special education teacher contracts, again, simply because we, there weren't enough people for us to hire. So we had some extra money there. So that money is being moved also to this monitor account for this school year. Additionally, schools received estimated academics, which is Project 9, and wellness, Project 2 allocation ranges in May 2022 to support planning for FY '23. In order to provide schools with sufficient funding levels, .6 million is needed this school year. That specific amount of money going, this specific amount of money that is going to every single school is outlined in the document that was posted on board docs just the other day. This money can be redirected from, again, our special education teacher contracts because we couldn't hire enough people. So the money's there, and we're moving it over for that, that level of ESER funding school by school. We first received information about this in the beginning of August, and just this week, our budget staff, thank you very much to them, posted a very comprehensive piece of information going through account by account and line by line, you know, exactly where the money was coming from and where it was going. So with that, I think that's enough information.
Thank you. Ms. Bukarski, would I just speak to you a second?
Well, I don't think there's anything left to add. That was a very detailed and thorough explanation, so I'll just let my colleagues ask questions if they need.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. I do want to first convey my appreciation to my colleagues and Dr. Reed that my concerns that when this was on the school board agenda two weeks ago, we did not have any attached documents at all, and I know how much this board is committed to making sure that not only the board is knowledgeable before we take action, but that the public also has that information to understand how we're arriving at decisions. So I do want to express my appreciation to our CFO, Lee Burden, and her team, whoever pulled this documentation together. It certainly provided more information than what we had. I will probably set up a time to talk with our Budget Chair and Ms. Burden because I'm, I'm still trying to understand how we pull information together on this, and so I guess I just have a quick question because on its surface, I absolutely support academic intervention services, and I also support case manager monitors. But one thing that struck me, since Dr. Reed is really helping us appreciate what loose versus tight looks like, there's a lot of latitude here on the case managers' monitors section, and I'm just, was hoping someone in staff can explain to me, why would some schools be using funds for case managers, some are using them for monitors, and, you know, what ends up driving that differential because of how we're allocating per-pupil funding for both these positions?
So, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I would expect that each school is looking at their unique context in terms of what the academic needs are for the students that they're serving, but I would be happy to defer also to Dr. Presidio, as I know his instructional services have been overseeing the plans. So, Dr. Presidio?
Yeah, just to be clear, the academic interventions portion, I don't have any questions about. It was the second bucket of money related to case managers and monitors.
Thank you for that clarification. Dr. Presidio?
Yeah, absolutely, and those, those positions, again, as Dr. Reed already kind of said, is it really does depend on the unique context of the school. So there's kind of two major functions that those folks are providing. You have the managers who are doing the COVID tracking, the COVID case reporting, all of the notifications and all of the work with Fairfax County Health Department, as well as managing the cares room. And then the monitors were the folks that were providing that support to make sure that students were supervised when we were, you know, social distancing in the classroom in the school. In, you know, in some of our schools, students were spread out over the entire campus, outdoor classrooms, outdoor lunch. It really depended on, you know, based on the staff that the school had, where they needed to expend those funds the most. But there are two different categories, and schools could spend in both categories if they needed to spend in both categories. And we provided that distribution in terms of the breakdown for schools based on the student enrollment in, in the schools.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dr. Presidio. I know with 200 schools, there can be varying needs at the building level. Are these hourly positions, do we know, the case managers and the monitors?
Those were hourly, yeah.
Hourly?
Yeah, they were both hourly.
So almost like a substitute teacher, each school can hire and bring in as needed because, as we're all aware, you know, the, the COVID cases that we were dealing with in FY '22 will hopefully be different from FY '23. Fingers crossed.
That, that's, that's a great point, and when we originally built the budget for FY '23, we made that assumption, and then, you know, we had some different spikes with variants, and we opened the school year very conservatively, keeping our health and mitigation practices in place, which is why it's important that we restore the funding to the full level so schools can still hire those folks, and, you know, hopefully things will continue to progress positively as we're kind of seeing right now, and we might have some, you know, balance left over at the end of FY '23 that could be reallocated to other needs in FY ' '24.
Great.
Yeah, Dr. Presidio was, I think, sharing, we had quite, actually several conversations about that, feeling like it was more important to be prepared for what we might call a worst-case scenario and then pull back rather than not have folks allocated and find ourselves in a tight spot.
Absolutely, no doubt. I think it's just by holding off and voting tonight, everyone, I do think that this helped us get information again for our community that is following how we're spending our ESER dollars to understand, you know, what are these shifts and changes, and, you know, I, I really do look forward to also making sure that, you know, we made, we specifically have a project manager for our ESER dollars, and I, I would maybe ask that we continue to kind of get some updates on that.
Yeah, Dr. Petrich is actually on the line here with us virtually tonight, so she's here with us, and just as a reminder to the board and the community, we're actually going to have a work session on November 1st where we're going to review the updated evaluation findings of the impact, as well as the financial position of where we're currently at in the grant. So that work session, I think, will provide a lot of information, and then there will be a public hearing on November 3rd where the public can, as well as the open online survey, share any input that they would like to share as we think about building our plan and adjusting our plan for next year.
Wonderful, and I do want the public to understand that, you know, really, Dr. Reed, under your leadership and focus in responding to some constituency we heard of, I really appreciate your proactive efforts to engage the public in an in-depth way.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I also want to mention that we're going to have a full ESER 3 update work session on November 1. Thank you, Lee Burden. Thank you, Ms. Burden. Thanks.
Thank you. I will call for the vote. All those in favor? It's Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omesh, and Ms. Kiesgahmara, myself, with Ms. Maron away from the table, so that, oh, oh, thank you, and Ms. Maron. That motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item 5 Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda Item 6 New Business. The following are new business agenda items that will not-
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes, Dr. Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to add the FCP, the Truthful Education and FCPS Support for Educators and School-Based Administrators Resolution to New Business.
It is already on New Business, Dr. Anderson. It's Agenda Item 6.03.
Thank you.
The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. The new business items are on the screen. Agenda Item 7 Board Committee Reports. Sorry, I was very confused. Agenda Item 7 Board Committee Reports. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a governance committee update and Ms. Cohen for a report on the audit committee. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The governance committee met earlier this month, and we agreed on the procedures for the operation of the committee for the remainder of the year. We also identified policies that we would focus on, on a monthly basis, clustering those policies to a single department, giving guidance with, to the superintendent to ask individual departments to take a look at a cluster of policies and provide feedback so that we do not have representatives from multiple departments at a given meeting. So our first focus will be in October on facilities and transportation and environmental stewardship policies. That meeting will take place on October 19th, and we have asked for input from our Assistant Superintendent for Facilities as to whether the policies are effective and efficient, aligned with the JET goals, the CIP, and our ED spec. Additionally, we have asked for an assessment of the relevancy of each of the individual policies being presented as to whether it's appropriate in today's world. Future agendas will focus on specific departments, as I mentioned. Additionally, we sent a no-change policy member, memo to all of the board members and school leadership. There are five policies which are on that memo. Please take a look at the five policies and provide input. That was sent out two weeks ago, and we asked for input by the 7th of October so that it could be put on the consent agenda later this month. Those five policies include the Auditor General Authority, Conflict of Interest and Statement of Economic Interest, the Automated External Defibrillator Program, Home Instruction and Homeschooling, and Extracurricular Activities. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I appreciate my board members providing any comments that they might have.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. Audit got off to a roaring start with the unqualified committee chair, no, just kidding. I'm learning, I'm learning so many things.
Highly qualified.
We have our next meeting on October 12th, and looking forward to getting more information about the completed IT systems, business systems integration, audit, and we're just going to go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Agenda Item 8 Board Matters. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on, on Ms. Bukarski, sorry.
Sure, I'll go first. Thank you. Let me just find my notes real quick. Well, the last couple of weeks have been busy, as usual. I've focused on some principal meetings. I have had a couple of design committee meetings for a couple of my schools who are starting renovations, so that's always very exciting for the community, and I urge-
renovations. So, that's always very exciting for the community, and I urge folks to kind of be engaged in that and follow along and share their input. I'm looking forward to the community conversations at Oakton High School on October 11th and Centerville High School on October 18th with Dr. Reed. So, please come out and share your thoughts with us. I also have quite a few school visits planned that, of course, I'm excited about. In the next couple of weeks, homecoming games and parades. So, that's fun, and I know my kids are also looking forward to that. So, if you see me, please come and say hi, introduce yourself. I also had the opportunity to tour the Western Fairfax Christian Ministries annex in the Sully District. It was amazing to just see how they've grown over the years, are serving just thousands of people in our community, you know, our families, but also in our schools with their refrigerator programs. And I was very thankful to the Executive Director for taking me and my staff aide around and just showing us the work they do and the ways that they can partner with us to make sure that our families are well taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
It's been a whirlwind, I think, last three weeks of getting to go to different schools again. And as always, absolutely the highlight of this job is getting to go into schools and into classrooms and see so much fun learning happening, and happy kiddos. I really appreciated having the opportunity to go to South County High School, where I thought we had a really good turnout of parents, coastalians, and really good questions, tough questions, but really good, really good engaged questions. And that was awesome to get to be together. Mostly, I just want to say that I hope, as I mentioned in my comments about LGBTQ History Month, that this last nine days was a time of reflection for all Jews all over the world, and as we celebrated our New Year, but also as we had our Day of Atonement. And I just appreciate all the good work that happens here, but I also am very appreciative of my colleagues who respect on those days, that those are days that we observe and we don't work. And I appreciated so many of you just reaching out and wishing me a Happy New Year and wishing me an easy fast. So, thank you. I'm certainly grateful to be eating again. And Happy New Year to everyone who observes, but also, it's always just a great reset for all of us to have that opportunity to start the year anew. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Recently, had an opportunity to revisit Frost Middle School and check in on the renovation. We saw their state-of-the-art lecture hall, the science wing, and some giant new gym skylights that have been installed. We even had an opportunity to listen to the band practice in the new music rooms with really high ceilings and great acoustic wall panels. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the school finished in the future. And thank Principal Harris and team for welcoming me. Not far from Frost, Mosaic Elementary School was named a 2022 National Blue Ribbon School. Mosaic's high performance in reading and mathematics during the 2018 and 19 school year earned them the honor of being named an exemplary high-performing school. Out of 297 schools named this year, Mosaic is one of only seven schools in Virginia to receive the accolade. So, we are very excited for them and wish a congratulations to Dr. Asti and her team at the school and all the students for their well-deserved honor and recognition. On another note, Oakton High School will be hosting the Oakton Classic this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. Sixteen schools from across Northern Virginia will be participating in this seasonal marching band competition, followed by an exhibition performance by Christopher Newport University's marching captains. So, good luck to all nine FCPS schools who will be competing this weekend. And finally, I am looking forward to several upcoming school visits over the next two weeks, and Superintendent Dr. Reed's upcoming community conversation at Oakton High School next Tuesday. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit Timber Lane Elementary School for the first time because they're a school that is new to the Mason. I had not represented that school until the redistricting. And so, it was fantastic to meet with Principal Shiet and his staff, and for the warm welcome that they provided me with. I appreciated so much learning about the school, the community, and the school's needs. I'm looking forward to attending the Falls Church High School Homecoming Game tomorrow against Edison High School. I'm excited to join in the pre-game parade. My allegiance will be split, however, because I do represent a portion of the student body of each school. So, I'll be cheering for both sides, totally noncommittal. Congratulations to Mason District resident Benoy Sen, who attends TJ High School. Benoy was selected as a 2023 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Hopefully, next year, I can also offer congratulations to students from all of the schools in Mason. I do want to say thank you to the folks who attended the Mason District Roundtable, which I hosted just two weeks ago, which has grown significantly from a PTA, PTO roundtable to include our community, I'm sorry, our committee representatives from all of the board advisory committees, as well as our family liaisons and other community members. I was so inspired by that meeting. I was energized by all of your questions and all of your energy and your enthusiasm in wanting to ensure that our students also have access to the FCPS promise. Thank you to Dr. Zuluaga and Dr. Reed for joining us and responding to some very tough questions. I look forward to visiting Glasgow Middle School and Justice High School next week with Dr. Reed. So, that will be really fun. I do want to say thank you to the Glasgow parents who came to the meeting last week. Oh, it feels like so long ago. Last week, it was a very difficult conversation, but we appreciate your candor and your presence. And I would be remiss if I didn't send a huge thank you to Marcia Donovan, who is the family liaison at Glasgow. She turned out a number, a record number of parents who are English, who are, who's, for whom, English is their second language. Clearly, me too, and it's true. For whom, English is their second language, and they were comfortable to express themselves and to speak either in their native language or in English. But it was wonderful to see that part of our community really very, very well represented during that meeting. So, Ms. Donovan, whatever you're doing, please keep it up and share it with the rest of our schools so we can get similar turnouts. And call, looking forward to see you at the Oakton Classic because we do have many of our students who will be participating, such as the Annandale High School Marching Band Saturday at 1:15, as well as the Edison High School Marching Band. And I represent a part of that school. Thank you. Good night.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank Dr. Reed for joining me at Fairview Elementary, where we were celebrating our military-connected families and, you know, really giving them an opportunity to know how much we appreciate them being members of our Fairfax County School Community and helping them feel connected to the school staff. They really created such a wonderful reception with coffee and breakfast treats and just being able to talk with the families and hear what their experiences have been. Some military families who already been with us, and then the new families who have just arrived. And hats off to Fairview Elementary's team for putting together the extensive amount of paperwork it takes to become a Purple Star School. But it really is amazing, and I hope that all of us can help encourage and spotlight when this happens in our schools because I'd love to see all 200 become Purple Star Schools. Secondly, I just want to make note that tomorrow is Woodson High School's Homecoming Parade. It will start at 4:30 and go through the Woodson neighborhoods that are off of Ollie Lane. And I'm excited to participate in that parade again. As in prior years, it looks like Mother Nature's going to give us a nice, dry evening. And having two sons who played football at Woodson, in particular, it's always fun to come together and celebrate in preparation for the big game. And then I just want to finally note that there's no way with the late hour and my time limit that I could lay out all the things that are going well under Dr. Reed's leadership. But I wanted to share with my colleagues that I am profoundly grateful that every turn in particular, I'm seeing it also in our Office of Transportation and Facilities. My community is bringing concerns to me and under Assistant Superintendent interim, Assistant Superintendent Chuck Fanshaw, and as well as Dr. Reed in particular, when I've brought these issues, I'm amazed how quickly and thoroughly and effectively they're being addressed. And that makes a big difference, I know, for my community and I'm sure for many others. So, I know we can't always fill each other in, but I wanted to, and on that really positive note, you really are incredible. I just hope you are finding time to sleep at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I want to first thank the members of the Ventures and Community of the Mount Vernon District. These are all the faith-based leaders in that area who welcomed me yesterday for a discussion about the opening of schools and how the faith-based community can support our schools and our students most effectively. It was a great event. Also, want to thank Dr. Reed for being such a great listener at both the South County Community Conversation and the conversation with the Mount Vernon High School Pyramid Community as well. We also were able to participate in the Fort Belvoir Job Fair. This is the third time that Fairfax County Public Schools has been able to participate in that job fair. And it's a wonderful opportunity because, as you have mentioned, Ms. McLaughlin, we have so many families that are connected with the military. We have 13,500 students who are connected with the military. And Fort Belvoir is often the terminal assignment for military families. And so, it's a great opportunity for Fairfax County to be able to recruit there. And we appreciate that we were able to do so. I was also able to join in at the Colchester Town ribbon-cutting for Good Shepherd Housing. Colchester Town, currently, Good Shepherd owns 85 units there. And what that does is it preserves affordable housing along the Route 1 corridor. And that ribbon-cutting was especially important because Amazon, as part of their investment in Northern Virginia, donated $2 million to affordable housing and provided that to Good Shepherd Housing last week to invest in the community. So, thank you very much to Amazon, and thank you to Good Shepherd Housing for that because our families need the support. Going forward, we have a busy couple of weeks. This Saturday at Walt Whitman, there will be the Steamology STEM Fest, and that will be from 12 to 5 at Walt Whitman Middle School. And the following week, on the 15th, at the Hybla Center, we will have the STEAM Fest at the Wish Center. And that will be a great opportunity, both of those, for our students to do hands-on science. We will also be cutting the ribbon at the Lorton Community Center and Library on the 15th. And it's very exciting because that library has opportunities for our students to participate in extracurricular activities because many of the students who live right behind that library, they actually have the longest bus commute to get to a school which is several schools away. And so, we're really excited about that center. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. I've also been out visiting many of the schools across the Drainsville District and attending community events. We have a meeting tomorrow morning at Kent Gardens to reach out to the community regarding discussions on alleviating the overcrowding at that school and what some of our options are. Been working on some issues, issue-focused, student mental health and wellness. I had, was, had the privilege to attend a staff meeting with our Director of Student Services at Langley High School, and, you know, just heard firsthand, you know, what that office is dealing with and the struggles our students are having in this first quarter of classes. They also hosted, and McLean High School also hosted, Chris Heron, who is an inspirational speaker around addiction and substance abuse, and I think did a really nice job talking to our students about that issue. Ms. McLaughlin and I had our first skip meeting, our executive committee meeting, so we can fill the board members in on what was discussed there. It was kind of an overview of where we are. We are still struggling in the McLean area with transportation issues. So, I did visit the Stonecroft Transportation Center and put together a short summary paper for our senior staff with observations and ideas. And so, that is being looked over by Mr. Smith, our COO, and Mr. Fanshaw. We are especially looking to bring relief to our late afternoon buses. We still have a lot of late arrivals. I was planting today with collaboration from the Fairfax County Department of Stormwater Management at Lemon Road Elementary School, and will be tomorrow, I think Ms. Marin's going to be there too, at Aldrin Elementary School as well. Let's see. Oh, back to transportation. I'm really looking forward to, in a week or so, I'm getting up really early so I can meet one of our bus driver supervisors at 5:30 and see what the morning looks like as they organize all of the bus routes for the day. It's a busy job. I'm looking forward to finding out more about it. The Herndon High School Homecoming Parade is on Saturday, and I'm super excited. We recruited Dr. Reed to be in the parade, and I think Karen Kiesgahmara is going to be joining us as well. We have an Under the Sea theme, so a good time should be had by all. It's always a great event. Was happy to attend some community conversations with Dr. Reed, most recently at Marshall High School. Thank you for being there. I went to a student improv event at the Herndon Arts Center, where it was really awesome because it was both the Herndon High School team and the McLean improv team, and they were amazing. And lots more, but I'll stop at that.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Omesh?
Thank you. Ms. Tolan always has so many different events she's going to, runs out of time. No, I was really excited to see that we once again surpassed the average on SAT scores. Our students are brilliant. Although SAT scores are certainly not a reflection of any student's worth, I'll be the first to tell you that, but truly have been exceeding the mark academically as we've known them to do. But I do know that kids are stressed right now, seniors. We're just about a month away from some of the college deadlines. So, wishing all our seniors the best of luck as they plan, or sorry, yeah, seniors, as they plan for their next year. I also wanted to, well, in hopes that our community, our Jewish community, had a blessed Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. I know it was a long fast, but grateful that we have the opportunity to take moments of reflection, even if we don't belong to the faith that celebrates it, to recognize the pluralistic society we hope to build and the ways that we can teach our children, the reason we observe for our neighbors. And hoping that colleagues, as we begin calendar conversations again starting this year, that we further support this. It seems like it's actually a new era where school divisions across the region have taken this step. So, it's an exciting new time. I also want to acknowledge Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day, so it's important for us to recognize, of course, the first inhabitants of this country who unfortunately underwent a genocide at our own hands, but to really celebrate the culture and continued contribution, of course, of our native peoples in this nation. So, I hope that folks take a moment to reflect on that this Monday. Wednesday, I want to just remind everyone, it's walk and roll. I don't know if I'd recommend rolling to school, but just an opportunity to practice healthy and environmentally friendly, of course, steps forward as we imagine a different future in biking or walking to school, if that's not your usual route, in a way that's safe, of course. Finally, I do want to remind our community, we've started receiving feedback on the capital improvement program. As you might know, this is an annual process that we undergo to review our facilities. And there's going to be a public hearing scheduled later in about two weeks. and there's going to be a public hearing scheduled later, in about two weeks, the forum for that will open if you want to come speak to us, you know, in person, but there is an online forum already to solicit feedback, so feel free to share any thoughts you might have. And then I also wanted to acknowledge, I know there was some concern in the community about some recent findings that came out around disproportionate for students with disabilities. This continues to be a problem. Of course, our board has acknowledged it, and we did discuss it briefly at our work session on Tuesday in a more holistic review of special ed programming and needs and how we can improve the situation in our division. So looking forward to continuing those conversations with my colleagues, and that's my time. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Maron?
Yes, I want to share that I heard overwhelmingly from my constituents about the joy and equity of having the Jewish holidays off, the two holiest days of the Jewish year, and indeed, a rabbi who represents many 100 mil constituents remarked that it is the first time in human history that Fairfax County Public Schools has had Yom Kippur off for students and staff. That is how momentous that was. So it is surely something to be seen, and it was very much appreciated by constituents whom I've heard from. I will indeed be at Aldrin Elementary tomorrow to help with this rain garden early in the morning. And next week, Oakston High School is hosting its annual Candidates' Day, which I was really pleased to attend a few years ago, and I still keep in touch with one of the few Oakton High School constituents that I have who has gone on to intern in local government and local elections and is doing great things in college, so I'm really excited to have that opportunity again, and I hope that those Oakton students will not wait until Friday to connect about local matters and will attend the Oakton High School Pyramid Community Conversation with Dr. Reed, that is the preceding Tuesday, November, excuse me, October 11th. And as I was just remarking with our student rep, Ms. Togby, you know, this is for students too. Come hear your superintendent, come let her hear you. It's a wonderful opportunity, so don't waste that opportunity. I also was really, really found our special ed audit to be interesting, the discussion on Tuesday, and I think there's a lot of opportunity to do more, and a lot of the things seem very obvious to me, and I hope that we can make some quick action as we also build on the longer-term needs that are there, including continuing to provide supports for our dyslexic students. I heard a parent tonight talking about alternative communication supports. That's something I'm also very interested in, so lots of work to be done. I'm also really looking forward to the strategic plan that is being kicked off. Again, another opportunity for the community to come together, but really where my head's been lately is the strategic work, the governance work. Being on the Governance Committee, you know, I do want to ensure that the board is upkeeping our end of accountability by reviewing our policies every five years and at a minimum. So that's something I'm eager to do this year. And then finally, as we celebrate Walk to School Month, I believe it is, or Walk to School Day, that's coming up on a Wednesday, I was able to join Chairman Jeff McKay and Supervisor Walter Alcorn and other leadership in the county to launch the Take a Moment campaign, which is really about taking a moment when you're in transit, whether on foot or bike or car, to just look around, you know, make eye contact with a pedestrian or another driver, or just check that, you know, left or right way one more time because we have had such an increase in traffic incidents, and not only cars or automobiles and automobiles, but people and bikes and automobiles. So please take a moment, you know, our kids are worth it, our people are worth it, and you might see signs around, but just, you know, we all have to do our part, so thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Kiesgahmara?
Yes, I too have to say, mention the SPED review, the Special Education Review Audit, that we received the final results from this week. I'm really looking forward to working with my colleagues as we review that. That is the culmination of three years of work and hearing from the community consistently, and I just am grateful for being able to work with Ms. Corbett Sanders and bringing that forum topic forward and looking forward to what we can build out of that as a result of that collaborative work. This past few weeks involved some travel for me, but I also had an opportunity to attend the National Council of Negro Women's Brunch, which focused somewhat on what is going on in our schools and encouraging people to get involved in local government. I also had an opportunity to converse with our Educate Fairfax Foundation representatives as we talked about the new Innovators Fund. And I had an opportunity to sit down with students who heard from former civil rights leaders as they talked about how they can evoke change, and so it was just exciting to see them be able to ask questions. How did you do this as a student leader? They were people who had the opportunity to walk with people like Julian Bond and others, and to hear our students ask them, how can we accomplish things? It just, it was a moment. So I'm appreciative of that, and I will say for Educate Fairfax, put it on your calendars, November 9th will be the breakfast, and I'm looking forward to that and being there with our featured speaker, our Superintendent Dr. Reed. So I hope everybody has a great weekend, and I know I'm not quite "the" in, but pretty close, so good night.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgahmara, and I know I'm what's standing between you and bed, but it's 10:20, which I'm pleasantly surprised at. So I'm going to say I very much enjoy going to my community conversations, going to community conversations with Dr. Reed, to watch her speak to the communities at Herndon, South County, and Robinson. As an at-large member, sometimes it's a blessing and a curse to have the whole county, but it is actually very interesting to hear perspectives from around the county and see, hear similar concerns and questions and thoughts, and hear the differences as well, and really, you know, marvel at how we have such similarities and differences in a county as big as we are and how that happens and how we can address that, you know, and it's that, I think, what you call tight and loose. How do we make sure we address the needs of that community, but also have a consistent educational experience across the county? So that was great. I enjoyed meeting with our state legislators and board supervisor members alongside our legislative liaison, Karen Corbett Sanders, today as we talk about, and with Dr. Reed, about our school notification to school systems and employee arrests and convictions, and we continue to follow up on that to make sure that we are doing everything internally as well as working with our federal and state legislatures to address those concerns. I really enjoyed going to the Free Student Bus Pass and Metro Bus event. For those who don't know, Fairfax County is expanding its Free Student Bus and Metro Bus program to include five high schools now for free bus service, and since 2018, students have taken more than 110,000 free Metro Bus trips in Northern Virginia, and this gives them access to going to see their friends, going back to school for football games, for work. It is a game changer for many of our students. I've enjoyed meeting with many of our community groups, our Hispanic Educators Association, Asian Educators Association, and FCPS staff about really a multicultural approach to our work and how to support all of our students. Fairfax Federation of Citizen Association leads, SEPTA for Public Education, and the Fairfax County Disability Services Board, where we talked very timely about the need for better transition support and handoff and coordination between Fairfax County and what the county provides to our students, which was something that came up pretty significantly with our special education rapport, and we really talked about how do we develop a one-stop-shop for people with disabilities and our students and their families in that soft handout. I enjoy going to Mosaic Elementary School Community Meeting on Renovation and seeing the exciting plans from Mosaic. And finally, we had so many resolutions, I didn't bring this one, but I did want to mention that Disability Employment Awareness Month is October, and for those who don't know, it's to celebrate the contributions Americans workers with disabilities, and studies have found that Americans with disabilities are especially productive and motivated workers, but have a much harder time getting jobs, promotion, and fair pay. They are three times less likely than others to be employed and often on subminimum wages for their work. The greatest unemployment rate is actually for persons with disabilities, and often their strengths get overlooked because of the deficit. So it is an important month to celebrate. It's an important month to realize that while we have made strides, there's still a lot more strides to make. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.